Made available for viewing on the Methuen Public Schools website. Secretary, would you please call the roll?
Ryan DeZoglio.
Present.
Member Donovan.
Here.
Member Keegan.
Here.
Member Maxwell. Member Shabelia.
Here.
Member Willett.
Yeah.
Mayor Borogod.
Here. All members are present except for one. We need a motion and a second to accept the agenda, the amended agenda, excuse me, for February 10, 2025 is presented.
So moved.
Second.
Member, um, motion from Member DeZoglio, second from the Vice Chair. Discussion?
I'd like to make a motion to move the MHS 2526 Program of Studies approval from New Business C to what will be the new Staff Reports A and adjust accordingly.
So we're going to move, uh, the motion will be to move 6C and essentially make it the new 4A. Correct? All right?
Got it.
We have a second?
Second.
Motion from Member Shabelia, second from Member Willett to make that amendment. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. We need a motion to accept the agenda again as amended.
So moved.
Second.
Motion from Member Shabelia, second from the Vice Chair. Any further discussion? If not, we'll vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Superintendent, would you please introduce our student for tonight's flag salute?
I would be honored.
So I think we have, looking around, sorry. Gustavo here yet?
Oh, there he is. Perfect. So I'd like to call up Gustavo Savalas and Principal Erin McKay, if she's in the room, and Mr. Reeve, who is walking in right now. He was here earlier, but...
You want to read it or? He's ready, so. I know.
There she is. I was going out the last time and looked for her, sorry, and I saw her over there.
Okay. Does she have a copy or do you want?
She does.
Okay.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Erin Mackey. I'm the lower, excuse me, lower school associate principal at the Timony. I am proud to present Gustavo Fiteri Zavios to lead the Pledge of Allegiance. Gustavo has attended the Timony Grammar School since pre-kindergarten and is currently a fourth grade student in Mrs. Demers' class. His favorite subject is history. Out of breath. Is history, yes. There's a lot of stairs there. Uh, because learning about historic topics like the Civil War and other, uh, and other things. His favorite thing about the Timony is the people because they are nice. When asked about Gustavo as a student, Mrs. Demers had the following wonderful words to share. Gustavo is kind and respectful to peers and his teachers. He shows patience and support when working with classmates. He always has a positive attitude and is willing to help out whenever asked. He lives with his mom and his dad and his brother Carlos and sister Daniela. In his free time, he loves to relax and talk with his friends after he does his homework and plays outside. I like that his priorities are straight. He enjoys playing soccer. He aspires to be an author, specifically nonfiction, focusing on points of view of other people. Is it a pleasure to have Gustavo represent our school in leading the Pledge of Allegiance?
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God and the visible with liberty and justice for all.
Excellent.
Next on, oops, yep, next on the agenda is the introduction of our SOAR Award students.
I'd like to call up Cheryl Mancini, our supervisor of Fine Arts for Methuen Public Schools. We actually have two SOAR Award winners this evening that we would like to present you with. And there is a slideshow that's going to hopefully appear momentarily so you could see the work of our students that was not included in the packet.
Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, School Committee. Dr. Kwong, Assistant Superintendent Galobski-Tumey. I'd like to start out by saying that this is one of my favorite nights out in the school community. Um, it is with pride and pleasure to celebrate our talented Fine Arts students. At Methuen High School, we have Sergio Reyes and Cassandra Pratt. The reason why I'm picking two is because I have reading glasses on, so I can't see ahead. That's why I'm like, I gotta take them up. Uh, the reason why I'm picking two is because in the Fine Arts, visual art and music are two completely separate things. A lot of times, we have a student that shines in all, across all, you know, music, theater. But this year, we have two exceptional students. Sergio Reyes, who, um, he auditioned for Senior District and was chosen as the pianist. Out of all the cities, you know, Methuen, Andover, Haverhill, he was the choice. He auditioned, they get scored, and he was the top-rated student. So I will start with Sergio. The Fine Arts Department would like to highlight Sergio Reyes for the SOAR Award. Our highest achieving students in music possess different and distinct skill sets from other academic and non-academic classes. It is important to acknowledge that excelling in any music discipline to the advanced level is no small feat. And it often means that students typically focus intensely on one area when they get to their senior year in preparation for college. Sergio Reyes is an excellent musician, performing for us both on clarinet and piano. He is a type of student who shows leadership by example. He made the Junior District Jazz Band as a freshman and the Senior District Concert Band as a junior, both on piano. At last year's jazz concert, he had also played piano with a pro jazz band. He has taken just about every music class we offer, band, jazz band, music technology, music theory, and is planning on pursuing a music career. You know, sometimes our students who are quiet often show leadership without being, you know, outgoing. And Sergio is one of those students who just shows his leadership through example and modeling. So I'd like to invite up his family. Excuse us, we have two, so we're trying to figure that out. So I'd like to invite Sergio to come say a few words.
Thank you for this award. It's very exciting to play the piano. I like music a lot. I'd like to thank my, my family and the, and the teachers at, at the school for supporting me. Thank you.
So now we'll try this again. Sergio's family, come up and take a picture. I also got the pleasure of teaching his sister when I was teaching at Methuen High School, so this is a joy for me to see the sister and the brother together. Okay, are you ready?
Yeah.
Awesome. So there is a slideshow presentation that I put together that they'll share with you later on with the work that Cassandra has done and some of the photos and a music clip of Sergio playing in the jazz band at the district level. The Fine Arts Department would like to highlight Cassandra Pratt for the SOAR Award. Our high, again, our highest achieving students in art possess a different and distinct skill set from other academic and non-academic classes. It is important to acknowledge that excelling in any visual art discipline to the advanced level is most, no small feat and often means that students typically focus intensely on one area they get to their senior year in preparation for college. So that's the same idea with the visual arts. Cassandra Pratt is a student deeply involved in the visual arts. She's currently enrolled in Photo II and Ceramics Independence Study. She has taken visual art classes every year, and she has also taken music theory. She actively participates in Stage Door 22 and works on lighting for the shows and other events at Methuen High School. She also actively participates in the yearbook and has volunteered many hours to take photos for various clubs and activities, including band performances. She is an engaging student in the classroom who thinks deeply about her work. She has spent years at MHS making personally meaningful artwork and developed a clear voice as a young artist. She is also a great student outside the Fine Arts realm and a National Honor Society member. Cassie plans to double major in college and one of her majors will be ceramics.
Hi, I'm Cassie. I will say a few words now. I've, it's, over the course of my years here in Methuen High, the Fine Arts Department, along with all the other teachers here, have been incredible people. I've loved watching the Arts Department grow and change over these past years. I love being involved in the arts here. And especially this year, Mr. Corret has done a lot to provide for the arts program, which I'm really appreciative of. But I really want to emphasize how important the teachers are to my work, not only as an artist, but my growth as a human. And I know that, um, there's an upcoming union meeting on Thursday, and I just want to know, make sure everybody knows, that the students notice, um, when the teachers are frustrated with the programs that are happening. So I encourage, um, you all to take the teachers seriously, as I know you're already doing, but, um, yeah. Okay, that's all.
It's okay. You can say nice things. It's okay.
I did say nice things.
And now I'd like to invite up the family to take a photo.
Do we have any updates from our student representative?
No, I'd like to pass it on to the Student Council Representatives.
Hi, I'm Tensy Mahmoud. I'm a junior at Methuen High.
Good evening. My name is Leonardo Ferrofilio, and I'm a freshman in Methuen High.
So the 39th Annual Methuen High Science Fair was held in the dining halls on Monday, February 3rd, from 8:15 to 10:15 and from 6:00 PM to 7:00 PM with awards immediately following. The MHS Science Fair showcased 90 projects from which 150 students participated who engaged in scientific inquiry to learn about science and the world around us. Pending an approved individual research plan, the following students will proudly represent Methuen High at the Region Four Science Fair, which will be held on March 7, 2025, at the Tufts University. Region Four science participants were Milo Isaacs, Elias Castillo, Anthony Siewoski, Harry McPhee, Hajar Damir, and on following students who won first place in the following areas. Lana Nakul for outstanding biology project. Chloe Goggins for outstanding environmental science project. Crystal Castro and Anwar Mamdu for outstanding chemistry project. Sloan Farrell for outstanding engineering project. Sofia Ferrera for outstanding research project. Jacqueline Mastrow for outstanding laboratory project. Yasmin Brita for first place at the individual science project. And last but not least, Ty Bozal, who's present in the room right now, and Thomas Lee for first place team science project.
This year's Poetry L L MHS champion is senior Isabella Sirbo. Isabella made an impressive performance at MHS semifinals and will move to state semifinals in Newportport on March 8. We wish her all the best in the next round. The Methuen Explorer Girls Hockey Team is currently sitting undefeated at 15-0-2. They are in fifth place in the Division One State Rankings and now hold MVC title under their belt. They are graduating four seniors that have been playing since eighth grade. They're determined to make it to TJ Garden to, for the state championship. They have their annual memorial, Brianna McCarthy, determined next week on Monday at 5:00. And Wednesday, the time is to be announced either 3:00 or 5:00. They would love to have you there to support the time, the team, as they wrap up on the regular season. The MHS Credit for Life Fair, the love in a partnership with Mary McValley Credit Union will be held on the morning of Friday, February 14, 2025, in the Klimas Memorial Field House. Through their participation in the fair, senior students will be presented with real-life scenarios as they experience the success and the challenges of managing this personal budget. Thank you. That's all.
Thank you for the updates. Any other updates? No?
No, we're good.
Great. Move on to public participation. No one? Is there anyone in the room who would like to share public participation? If not, we'll move on. And at this point, I'll close that portion of the meeting. If you are not able to make a meeting in person for public participation in the future, you can send an email to Martha Saroyes at M A S I R O I S at methuen.k12.ma.us before 3:00 PM on the day of the School Committee meeting. At this point, we're going to move on to the approval of minutes. We need a motion and a second to approve the minutes of January 13, 2025.
So moved.
Second.
Motion is from Member Shabelia, second is from the Vice Chair. Discussion? There's no discussion. We'll vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. We need a motion and a second now to approve the minutes from January 27, 2025.
So moved.
Second.
Motion is from Member Shabelia, the second is from the Vice Chair. Discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
Excuse me, Mayor?
Yes.
Just so we give her a chance to vote, I believe, uh, Member Maxwell has joined the meeting. Via Zoom.
So what we'll do going forward is we'll need a roll call vote for all other items on the agenda. We need a motion and a second to approve the minutes from the Facilities Building Subcommittee from January 27, 2025.
So moved.
Second.
Motion is from Member Shabelia, the second is from the Vice Chair. Discussion? There's no discussion. Roll call?
Kristen's gone.
She's gone.
Okay, so she's not present via Zoom, so we will take a voice vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. We need a motion and a second to approve the minutes from the Transportation Subcommittee, January 31st, 2025.
So moved.
Second.
Motion is from Member Shabelia, the second is from the Vice Chair. Discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. We're now on to staff reports. As amended on the agenda, we'll have the MHS 2526 Program of Studies approval. Need a motion and a second.
So moved.
Second.
Motion is from Member DeZoglio, the second is from the Vice Chair. Discussion?
As you can see, we have some high school staff here. Mr. Corret is up here for you. I'm going to give him my microphone. If you have questions, hopefully we'll be able to answer those. Uh, we can pull up the folks who are with us tonight as well to help answer any questions you might have before you actually approve that, those changes.
Good evening. Uh, so before I, I mentioned the Program of Studies, I just want to give a couple of shout-outs. Cassandra beat me to it. When I saw she was winning a SOAR Award tonight, I was going to give her a shout-out. Outside of just being a fantastic, you know, student, uh, both academically and with, with what she enjoys in, in the Fine Arts Department, she's also, uh, my personal mental health guru. Uh, she frequently checks in on me and just makes sure that I'm doing okay, especially in the new position. Uh, she's been fantastic. Anytime she sees me, she, she checks on me and builds me up. So, uh, something that, that I really appreciate, and I'm just, uh, taken aback by that, that, you know, that our students have that awareness in them to even, to even check in on the adults who most, I think, presume are, are, are doing okay. So that's Cassandra right there. Fantastic. So the, the other shout-out is, is to the administrative team. Uh, they put a lot of time and effort into going over the Program of Studies and, and looking at it and trying to refine it in a way that we can just continuously make it better. I do have several staff members here with me tonight. If you have any specific questions, in particular with some of the bigger changes that we're proposing in the Program of Studies, I'll just kind of quickly highlight those. Um, so first, um, with our CTE department, uh, we're looking to add an, um, uh, an exploration, student explor, um, exploration of career and technical education course. Uh, and that's in alignment with, um, our, our Chapter 74 funding that we're hoping to get through a designation of, of adding a fifth pathway to our CTE program. With that, we're also proposing moving media production from Fine Arts into the CTE department, which would give us again that fifth pathway. Another big, another one of the bigger changes in the proposal is, um, to try and level out some course offerings in our Health Department. After getting some feedback from students adding a, we're proposing adding a sports nutrition course. Uh, so we currently have three electives that are, that are mainly running with, within our Health Department. Um, the fourth course, uh, just, we, we had low student interest and it wasn't able to run this year. So by adding the sports nutrition course, that would, that would help, uh, level out that elective course, which is a quarterly course, and essentially giving kids more options for, for coursework to take. And then the other big, um, uh, proposal that we're, we're looking to add to our, our Program of Studies for next year is adding African-American studies, AP African, African-American studies to our, our courses as well. Um, and in the memo that we provided, there's some pretty good data in there in terms of, um, this course being offered in other schools, uh, the, the interest at, at the interest level that they were able to get with, with more students looking to take AP courses, so. But again, any questions that, that anybody from the committee specifically has, be happy to answer them and/or get the staff members up here to provide clarification on, on some of our proposals.
We have a question from Member Shabelia?
The timer started. All right. I just have one quick question for you. Uh, it says here, the math class on page 70, which was supplemental math C, is being removed due to the lack of MCAS requirement now. I, I guess I want to understand because in my mind, I read that as math C was a kind of a, the, the folks who weren't excelling in math previously, and that was why that was a prep class specifically targeted at the test, I assume? Is there something that's replacing that for the kids? I mean, just because the test is no longer there, we still need to learn the math.
Yep, so, um, our math department chair isn't here. Lisa can certainly build on my response, but, um, uh, essentially, uh, we offer three different supplemental math courses, A, B, and C. A is for, uh, freshmen, and then B and C are for sophomore students. Supplemental B typically happens first semester. And then supplemental C historically is, was offered second semester, and that course was specifically geared towards, um, test-taking strategies that were predominantly geared towards, um, taking and being successful on the math MCAS. I'm not sure if there's anyone to add, Lisa?
Sure, I'll just add, um, there's a number of math classes that are meant to support students who, who need the support. In addition, the Academic Support Lab, um, is a class that students can be scheduled for where they are with, um, a certified teacher and get that one-on-one or small group, uh, support that they need to cross the finish line. I think supplemental A and B were the more populated math courses anyway. Um, so sub C just frees up a teacher to teach a different section of something.
Thank you.
Same with biology. Supplemental bio, I believe, is in there as well. Same with biology. Supplemental bio, I believe, is in there as well.
Just I I wasn't questioning that one because it said it hasn't run for several years due to staffing. So that one was kind of an easy.
Member DeZoglio?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I want to thank everybody for doing these studies. It's it's great. I know Mr. Lindfest, my teacher from freshman year, I think he was, him and his department, it's amazing, went over the coursework. Honestly, I wish I was in school back when I was. We had some of these classes. The question I have though, because we had this conversation when the MCAS requirement was gone away, that we were all discussing it. When we wrote on this tonight, these these are not going over the questions that we had when the MCAS went away and we were talking about how we were going to structure our class, like grades and et cetera. Is there more of a conversation coming in the future for that?
I'm not, I'm not sure I fully understand the question, but but this is the pro- so so we know MCAS isn't going away. Kids are still taking the MCAS.
But remember when I said to you, well, with grading, for example, and you said we could go over those questions down the road when we have those, because I said, instead of having a D requirement to passing.
This is not that conversation. This is about courses and the program of studies, so kids can select their courses next year in the coming weeks.
Perfect. Second of all, I I don't know if I can discuss it during this part. After Dark, which is one of my prized bringing to Methuen Public Schools. The question is, is that used for just kids that, because the question I want is kids that are struggling? Could or deciding not to go to college, are they allowed into that program?
Short answer, yes. There's probably a longer answer to that, but over the past, this is our third year of After Dark.
Yeah.
We probably have a little more than a dozen students now that are participating. Is that my close?
Yes, that's accurate. There there are some qualifications that students need to have in order to be accepted in terms of attendance and behavior and also credits. They have to have a certain number of credits in order to be considered for the program. But it is open and.
And it's growing a little bit each year that we can continue to sustain financially.
So when the first time we brought that, and I don't know if this is the discussion to talk about it, but just while.
It's appropriate as far as this courses at the high school, so.
So the question I have, I think, because I've talked to other school committees and when me and Frank Cirillo put it together, one of the things, especially with the chronic absentees that were that Desi's looking for, I think this is one of the requirements that we need to look at and say to a student that is having a chronic absence. Say, listen, you come to school, you can probably pick up a trade. So but you have to come to school and do well. I think that's one of the things we need to look at with attendance. Saying maybe this could be the initiative to bring that student from being a chronic absent. By saying to them, obviously, you're not, because they're a different schedule, there's, it might be more suitable for that student because we don't know what's happening at home. But I think that's something we need to look at at that requirement to maybe attract more people.
And I think I I from our initial conversation about this, right, we had two students the first year. And now we've grown that to a dozen, maybe a few more. So and we also have to keep in mind, there is a financial cost to the operating budget of this program. There is a financial cost. We get to claim the students for CTE with the foundation budget, but we actually have to pay Greater Lawrence an invoice of the difference of tuition. So so in the spring, I have to make sure I budget for this year for next year's kids coming into After Dark, so we have to have that amount of money. So there's a sustainability part here we're keeping our eye on. And we know we can sustain this at this time, right? So there's, we are keeping track of that piece as well to make sure that we have the ability to keep this going. And also for Greater Lawrence to continue to have the seats for us in the various options, right? They they have, I think they started with two options as a trade and now there's four options as a trade for After Dark, so they're doing their due diligence to at least open those options up to our students. Where the first year we did it, we only had two, I think the kids only had two options to go into that first year, so it was limited. So I think as the years continue, it will grow, but we do, we absolutely have a financial obligation that we are writing a check to Greater Lawrence in the spring. I don't remember when we get the invoice from them. It's it's some, yeah, we, they send us an invoice. We actually have to pay that out of our operating budget. And again, we get to claim the kids as CTE in October first for enrollment, but we have to pay the difference in tuition for them.
All right, thank you.
So just, again, we're just keeping track of that. But it is growing, so we do have a good number of kids. Ms. Tatro gets all the kudos for the conversations she's having with these kids and making it work and the scheduling and just making that program work for our kids, I think, is 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 happening.
Perfect. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Vice Chair?
I first want to say I'm super disappointed to see sign language come out of this because I started advocating for it five years ago before I was on the school committee for the special ed kids to be able to take that as a foreign language. So I'm super disappointed to see it come out. I understand that we can't get a teacher. So I understand why it has to come out, but I I'm just, I have to say that I'm super disappointed to see that come out. But my question is, I'm I'm looking at this and I'm not seeing the strides classes in here for math, English, history, or science. And I'm wondering where those are in the courses studies or have they been removed?
They haven't been removed. If they are not in there, I am not exactly sure why. And we can look to having them added. We did catch an oversight with regards to our Unified Health Class that we've we've since, you know, updated the program of studies for. But I'd have to look very specifically at the program of studies just to confirm that they're not in there. But it's not a course that we're, it's not a cor- those aren't courses that we're removing.
Okay, all right. As long as they're not being removed.
Yeah, as a point of clarification.
Okay, thank you.
Member Willett?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just to piggyback on what the Vice Chair was indicating. What was the interest for the sign language program? I know it was a staff limitation issue. What was the interest?
Unfortunately, it was high.
It was high, like, okay. So I thought, and we can maybe explore it further, I thought Neco provided those courses.
We we initially, and correct me if I'm wrong, Dr. Blasky, we initially contracted with a teacher from Neco the first year we did this. That was the only person we could actually find to to teach this. And then I don't think that we didn't, it didn't work full-time. It was hard to find a full-time. We had full-time interest. We definitely had enough kids to have a full-time position, but we've, we were excited about this. We opened this. We thought we were going to be able to keep this, sustain it. There are literally no teachers in this area who are certified, who can teach high school, who were not pulling from a college center and that that switch. We haven't, we haven't hooked anybody enough to to make that switch to public, you know, high school secondary instead of post-secondary.
So there was outreach in Neco and that wasn't successful?
Yeah, it was, I I believe it was the person couldn't commit. We only had like two courses that we could run because of that person's schedule, right? So it was more of a, we're paying the person to teach those two courses when they could fit into their Neco schedule. It was, it got too complicated and just didn't work for us to be able to carry on. Now, what, the whole point of having a full-time staff would be to grow it, right? You have kids in the first year, you have kids in the second year and can continue on that path. Only being able to offer one or two courses a year, it just wasn't going to give the kids who were interested the pathway that we needed.
Because it's such a marketable skill.
It is. Yep, except there's nobody in the market that wants to teach it.
That's unbelievable. It's like I would be on a level of translators, interpreters.
I mean, we've kept it in for the past three years to, we're hopeful and we posted it again last year. I mean, I I just, I don't, we don't want to continue to give people a false sense of hope for this because there is an interest, but it's just not working for us right now. And this isn't a similar, you know, this is a similar story in other high schools as well.
And where is it the nearest like college preparatory school or private school that would be deaf and had a hearing? That maybe we could reach out to them as well. Is there anybody local in the immediate vicinity?
Beverly School for the Deaf is the only one I can think of, right?
Is it, I mean, because.
Ms. Bozek.
And Learning Center for the Deaf in Framingham.
Framingham. Framingham and Beverly are the only two we know of. Am I right on the Beverly?
Because I'd love to have this contained to be on our radar screen and try to exhaust the outreach, but if it's not there, it's unfortunate. And then just to follow up on Member DeZoglio with the After Dark Program. Do we know offhand what the breakdown of the cost for the twelve students would be? Is something that could be provided to us?
For the last couple of years, it's been about fifty-five hundred per student. Probably go up a couple hundred dollars. It's the difference between a regular ed student and the the cost for a vocational student. So it's just the difference.
Except by the state. It's not a number that we have.
Yeah, so the the CTE, there's a funding amount that's matched to the student and this would be the added amount for the invoice. Okay, so it'd be like about five thousand times twelve and that would be, okay. And is there a waiting list for that program that we know of or we just incrementally increased it? Okay.
We incrementally increase it and we do it by students who are interested.
Okay.
Yep.
All right. And then obviously, I just, you know, kudos on the the AP African, I think it's African history, African studies. Absolutely. I love the backup on it. I think it's an enticement for underprivileged students and I absolutely am in favor of it a hundred percent. And I just want to say that for the record. Thank you.
Member Donovan?
Thank you. Thank you, Principal Coret. Just real quick, the CTE, the multimedia production and broadcast, can you just, I'm just intrigued. So the introductory course is unweighted and then subsequent courses will be honors level? Could I, could you just explain the theory behind that?
Sure. So the idea behind it is to give kids a risk-free opportunity to take a course, maybe a step outside of their level of comfort. And then if it's a course that they enjoy, they can continue on and 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 the, you know, the 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 next level of courses do get more challenging. And with that, you know, we do want to weight it appropriately as an honors level course.
So if I were a senior and and I was looking back at my GPA, it would kind of balance out having an unweighted class and then having the opportunity to do honors if I'm looking back at my career four years from now? Is that the, some of the reasoning? Because I know that's important to some students.
Yeah, I mean, it's, there's, I mean, I'll just let Dr. Blasky.
I'm just intrigued.
Sure. And our teacher leader for CTE, Maureen Melanson's here as well. So that's in line with the other course offerings is that unweighted introductory level. And we found a few years ago, students who are concerned about their GPA were avoiding those classes because they were rated as college prep courses. And there's certainly enough rigor to argue that they should be of honors weight. And so since we've made this switch, we've had a lot more success in retaining students who opt for the pathway.
Perfect. That totally explains where where I was looking. I was just a little confused about.
I will say also that at the higher levels, the students get into more hands-on, career-focused material. They also have the opportunity to earn certificates and degrees, which would be appropriate for that as well, that they can put on their LinkedIn, their resume.
Thank you for that. And I know the state came out with all the new standards for health. We're all good now? We we're meeting all, okay. Thank you.
Yes, so we we have a grant from Desi that we applied for and were awarded that gave us professional development throughout the entire year and enough funding for curriculum work. So Liz Folks is our teacher leader for health who's here tonight. And she's been organizing the curriculum team, working with Lighthouse, who's our vendor for PD, to make sure that we're in alignment with the standards.
Okay, so we're good to go on that. And finally, the Unified Health Course. Now, the course is currently taught, so it's now officially in, okay. I I just want to commend, I think that is a a meaningful, purposeful course where everyone can benefit and learn. So I appreciate that addition formally.
We do offer it both in phys ed and and foreign arts as well. And then for just whatever reason, it wasn't in the program of studies, so. We noted that and made sure to get it in there.
I think it's a wonderfully inclusive class, so thank you for that.
Quick follow-up from the Vice Chair?
I know we probably don't have an answer to this question, but do any of our health classes risk losing federal funding based on the new administration's dictates?
I'm going to hold that question so that when I give my update on the funding and then an update on sort of recent happenings, that can be included in that response, if that's okay.
Thank you. So at this point, we need to vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it? So that's been adopted. Next on the agenda is, yes, thank you. We're going to have the update now on the fiscal year twenty-six state education aid.
So I included in your packet today just an update. I did this last year as well. We have a wonderful relationship with Roger Hatch, who is part of Desi's finance office. And he gives us superintendents an update every year on the budget and what it means. This is an overview, so this is a general summary. And then unfortunately, the little part that that pertains to Methuen is the image on the other page that I tried to capture in a very long spreadsheet, but I hope that it captures it because you can see the number. But basically, what we have here is another year where the inflation rate is not set and matches the inflation rate, the real inflation rate. So we have a one point nine three percent inflation rate, which is not what we wanted. So we're seeing a foundation budget that because of that inflation rate is part of the formula is much lower than we wanted and much like last year where we had the one point five percent inflation rate, which poses a significant number of challenges for us and for many. So some of the things that are befuddling to us, so I'm going to use that word tonight, is the fact that our increase over last year is two point four million dollars here in Methuen. So you can see that on that, the little image that I did capture. The far right side in the blue, it says change in aid to two point four one seven. That's our change in aid over last year. Now, that number that you see is similar to the number that we've seen previous. It's actually lower than the first, the year before SOA came into play. So what what we're not experiencing is what we were promised, which was a seven-year gradual increase in aid with the Student Opportunity Act in urban settings with higher numbers of low-income English learners and special education students, high-need students. So we are befuddled by this because our numbers that went into the foundation budget were checked and double-checked, so everybody was accounted for appropriately. So simply the way that this formula was completed is, here's the product. So that's what we're dealing with right now. The city contribution for this, I don't think it's actually in this. Oh, yes, it is. So if you look at where in the middle right there, it says minimum contribution. Do you see where it says forty-seven million and now it says forty-nine million? So that's the minimum contribution increase for the local. Right? So our Chapter Seventy increase was two point four and our city contribution increase is two point five. So I, with, I mean, just this, if we just pause for a minute, if there are questions regarding this, I do want to answer Member Keegan's. And then I have a couple of other things I want to say about recent events.
Member Shabilia?
I don't know if it's for Ian or Gina, but have the special ed two fifty-seven rates, were they published along with the governor's budget? Do we know what that increase is going to be? Do we know what that increase is going to be? The, the special ed rates?
I can answer that. So, um, I think I can answer it. Let me try because you asked both of them.
I'll ask anybody. Anybody who's got the answer, I'll take it.
I'm swimming in this right now. Uh, the, you said added district tuition rates, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, so, um, we, we are assuming the OSD actually allowed, uh, added district schools to raise their rates 3.67% uh, this year, so that's what we're calculating. Uh, they will up to, so they can go up to. So when we're calculating our budget right now, that's what we're going up to as an increase. Uh, because they won't-
That is.
They won't send us their actual tuition. They send it to us in a letter form when they get to it.
And it'll be June.
But I'm saying like we budget for like, because they typically-
Budget for the max.
I don't know if we've seen them budget less than what they can go up to. Uh, they don't typically budget less than what they're allowed to go up to as an increase. So we will expect most of those schools to actually have a 3.67 increase. Um, the collaboratives are also starting to come out with their increases as well. So I do have Crest Collaborative. I don't have the other collaboratives where our kids are at just yet. Those are starting to be voted on right now, uh, within the member districts and at the board meetings. But those are all things that we're calculating this week, like right now.
And Dr. Kwan, can I just add that for the private placements, that OSD sets those rates, there are some placements that also put in for special circumstances. So we could see a larger increase than the 3.67. So when I'm looking at all of that, if they're highlighted, because I know that they're seeking a special circumstance, I increase it a little bit more in my projection, anticipating that at some point during next fiscal year, we're going to see that increase.
And ballpark, do we know what that swing is going to be? Is it going to be a $2.4 million increase?
You're, you're probably really close.
That's what I was worried about.
Don't write that down.
No, I know, and I know it's, it's ballpark, it's estimate.
Don't write that down. Yeah, it's, it's going to be significant enough that between just that increase alone, um, and, um, some other contractual obligations, uh, that $2.4 million is already come, is gone.
So I guess without getting in and beating the dead horse, because we've been talking about this now for a while and the governor's budget has been perpetually trashed, I, would it make sense for us to maybe expedite our budget session and get our twice annual meeting scheduled with the council so we can have this conversation with them? Because I am willing to bet when they see or hear or realize that we're now starting the conversation at 4, 49.5, that, uh, there's, there's going to be a lot of hurt feelings at that table.
Yeah. So I think, uh, the mayor, we're trying to schedule that meeting in March. Uh, I would also say that for our team, uh, we are going to be, we're, we're moving up our, um, preliminary proposal meeting to the March workshop instead of the April business meeting. So typically, we've done the first presentation in April. Uh, I have alerted this team that we're moving that up to March 24th. They're so happy. Um, March 24th, I believe it is, but, um-
See the joy on Ian's face.
Yeah, for obvious reasons. I mean, we, we need to, our team needs to really, uh, everybody's crunching numbers right now and making sure that we have what we need to present. Um, but also it's going to have an impact. So yes and yes. So we're going to up that. I think it's important. I think it's important when we meet with the city council that we have a conversation about what we're going to be up against. But what's more important is that the school department budget is presented to all of you first. If that makes sense. I'm not saying the meetings can't happen, but I'm not going to present the school department budget to the city council in our joint meeting. That would be, that would be odd, um, right, and unnecessary. But the conversation about what we're going to be up against in that meeting, which will likely happen before March 24th, absolutely, I think this needs to be the conversation about what we're up against.
All right, that's good because I, my concern was coming into tonight that it would be, uh, sort of business as usual. The council wouldn't see our budget until June, when they do their budget sessions.
No, and also know that Ian's office, uh, we have been, since I've been superintendent, we've been putting together the same budget book that you get for every city council member every single year I've been superintendent.
Doesn't mean they read it.
I'm just saying I have provided that, uh, usually in May, uh, before our public hearing is when we provide it to all the city councils as well, so they have ample time to look through details before any public hearing. So they do, they do get the detail, but they don't have the, the authority to have that conversation about the details. But I think it's important that they see what's in our budget. Um, so they will, I will continue that practice. I have no reason not to this year. But absolutely, I would imagine the meeting that we're going to have with them, again, hopefully in March, um, will be about the budget. Again, that's the, the intent of those joint meetings are supposed to be about the budget. That's again why that policy was created, uh, seven years ago, was to make sure that there was open lines of communication about our current budget, right? So the, the topics are very simple. Where are we in FY '25, right, which we will share out with the whole group? And then where are we going in '26 and what are we looking at?
Thank you.
Member Woollett?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. What I've noticed, uh, over the last four years is that we approved casinos, the voters approved the millionaire's tax, and we escalated to a record rainy day fund and we added sports betting. Uh, four years ago, we had an $8 million increase in Chapter 70. The following year, it was an $8 million increase. Then we went down to 3.8 million and we've gone down to 2.4 million.
Right.
In the universe of casinos, millionaire's tax, rainy day fund, sports betting. So I've said it repeatedly, it's not a revenue problem, it's a spending priority problem. And we have students, I've said it repeatedly, um, English-language learners, profoundly disabled individuals, uh, high-risk individuals, uh, students that are entitled to education. Regardless of the dynamics of the, the federal and state, um, they're entitled to an education. But we're not receiving the resources at the local level. And I don't know what the message that could resonate with the legislative delegation. I believe Haverhill's still in the same boat as Methuen and other communities. I, I hate to cast aspersions to a neighboring city, but Methuen has a certain student population and the neighboring city is just slightly over two times the student population. They're roughly about 4.5 times the Chapter 70 allocation. So there's a massive disparity that I don't feel has been corrected by the Student Opportunity Act. So someone would have to explain the number to me and also the fact that we do not have a, a catch-up provision to account for inflation. 1.93% is below the COLA for Social Security recipients, is below the CPI. And if you looked at milk and eggs and food prices and fuel prices, right, all those factors. And again, as you indicated, we will have costs related to the special education population and they're entitled to services. I will fight for those services. But it's definitely a, a revenue problem. And unfortunately, I only had the senator respond to me and not the other members of the legislative delegation on my letter. So we will have an opportunity to meet with the city council. And I will emphasize again, for probably the 10th time, we are not a top-heavy administration. If you look at Malden versus Methuen and the Pioneer Institute that does a yearly study, Malden is, spends well over $3 million. We're closer to $2 million and we made cutbacks to the administration. And some of the cutbacks I was against, but I, we had to balance the budget and we had to push forward something. Secretaries are pushed to the max. We're going to have to add maybe a couple of custodians. Um, the crisis intervention and then also the, the STEM supervisors that we want to have that's going to promote something for these kids in terms of their future. And we're not given the tools to operate. The, the circuit breaker, I think, is the right approach with the added funding and also the, the CTE. I welcome that, but it's, I'm mostly critical of the budget because I'm seeing a massive disconnect and I've said it year after year, to go from 8 million to 8 million, down to 3.8 million to 2.4, we're not going to function as a school district.
Correct.
We're going to have massive class sizes, right? And it's not fair to these students because how do you measure? If you had 20 kids to a classroom and you give it a few years, then you can measure the test scores. If you go from 20 kids to a classroom, the regular ed, then you go up to 25, 28. How are you measuring scores? And how are you providing services to those kids? You're not. So, I mean, it's a, really, it's a tragic situation that we're not getting the funding to get all those, uh, funding resources out there. Thank you.
Vice Chair?
Um, just to piggyback off what Member Woollett's saying, would it be in our best interest to invite the state delegation to our joint meeting with the city council so they understand what we're up against?
We certainly, we certainly could. Um, we certainly could. Uh, I don't know what the response will be, but we, there's no reason, no harm in, in asking. I can work with the mayor to make sure they get invited. I would also say, uh, just so you're aware, uh, we are, as a Merrimack Valley Superintendent Group, our roundtable, we are meeting with our delegations. So we have invited, it's a legislative breakfast. Uh, we have invited all of our legislators who represent all of our Merrimack Valley communities to come in mid-March, so that will probably be right between meeting with city council and our budget presentation. And, uh, we're deciding at this point the topic that we're going to be focusing on that really affects all the districts because we're not all the same, right? But we are affected in very similar ways by certain things like special education costs, things like that. So, um, the four officers, I am the secretary for that group. The four officers were trying to decide what really we want to target when we have that conversation. Uh, because this, this time is absolutely dire that we need them to hear, uh, what the actual effects of what's happening right now. Because, uh, I did include last year in my budget, budget presentation and I'm sure I'll include it again this year, just because it sets a point that those of us who've been having this conversation know. But, uh, SOA was a, was a linear upward slope, uh, that we were expected and we were told by sort of all parties when it was presented to us, what it would mean, how it would change the formula, how it would make things more stable in urban centers. And so for us to, uh, you know, we really started to change things with the additional funds those two years. And add things that we had lost over so many years to only then be back in the place that we were prior to SOA even coming aboard. And, and that's a challenge. And, uh, I did laugh today, uh, just because we need to have some humor to this a little bit. Um, I, I was sent today, so was Dr. Golovski, the, um, the report from DUCY that said, hey, report on your SOA plan and how everything's going and how you're making headway on all these things with your additional funding. So I did, I might have chuckled in my office by myself for a moment, um, because the timing was kind of impeccable. Um, you know, hearing about this information and then like, I'm not sure what, uh, miracles we're supposed to produce at this point, right? So we have this requirement that we have to have this plan for SOA. We love our plan. Uh, don't get me wrong, we love our plan. It's, it's solid. It aligns with our strategy for improvement plan, but, um, it's really going to come down to our resources, right? How much resources do we have to be able to achieve this plan? That's what our team does and that's what we'll continue to do, to present to all of you and work with the mayor and the CAFO and the city council. It's just, it's going to be a lot of conversation, a lot of work. But I, I will, I have a couple more things I'd like to add. If people don't have questions about this, to answer Member Keegan's question about federal funding, where we might stand, uh, and then a couple of other things. But I don't want to interrupt if there are questions more about funding or, yeah.
Member Donovan?
Yeah. Um, it kind of relates to Member Keegan, but with the concern about what will happen with the Department of Education. As you create the budget, are you looking at the monies we get from?
Yeah, so let's just go there because they are related. Yeah, I do. So let's just go there and, and, uh, we'll talk about that and then we'll talk about some other, a couple of other things, just so that we're in line. So, uh, we currently, right now, as you can imagine, as you're part of it, but imagine us also on the information that we're receiving on a daily, sometimes multiple times a day basis. Uh, we're getting information, we're getting alerts, we're getting advisories, we're getting do this, don't do this, do this, don't do this, do, okay. So, so this is the place that we're living in right now. And I think, uh, you know, I want to share with all of you that a lot has happened in the past two and a half weeks. And a lot, I mean, the directives, the, the advisories, the, um, just all of it. Uh, what to think about, what might happen, what might not happen. Uh, it's been a lot for our team to process, for all schools in the state and the country to process. Um, so, uh, I want to share with you that I, I believe I've learned this over time in my position, but I've also learned it over time just in life. Uh, a lot is coming our way and it is changing very quickly. So we are, I am taking the approach of I need to sit and process. Uh, we aren't going to react every time we get a new directive, new thing. We had a really, really, uh, I would say powerful meeting last Friday. That was the Urban Superintendent Network Group. Uh, and that group is just, it's all of us, right? Same, we are in similar environments, getting it from all different angles. Um, and like, what are you doing, what are you doing? And we just had some really good, uh, conversation and dialogue and some advice, if you would, about, uh, you know, everybody needs to take everything and sort of let it settle before we react. And, and that's what I'm doing and that's what we're doing. So there, there has been a lot on our plate about immigration. There has been a lot on our plate about federal funding and there's been a lot on our plate now about the LGBTQ community. Those three things are coming at us, uh, fast and furious. And so, um, you know, we are, we want, we support all of our students. We have really strong policies and laws in place to support our students, uh, in, in situations, regardless of who's at the door, if it's an ICE agent, if it's a police officer, if it's anybody. We have things in place that are going to protect our kids from me just making sure somebody has access to our kids. That's what FERPA is, right? So we have laws in place that are going to make sure that information isn't given to whoever asks for it. Parents have to have consent, right? So we have all those things in place, right? We've looked at all of those pieces. There's no reason for us to recreate anything new. Uh, our policies are strong. We are, uh, one of the things that we are gathering right now, and again, Dr. Golovski specifically and I are really, again, being strategic about our messaging and support for our families who are looking for that. We are getting inquiries from families who, who don't know what all this means, right? They're fearful, they don't know what it means. We don't have a ton of resources right now to direct them towards. So we're gathering those resources. Some of you may be familiar with the Know Your Rights campaign that's happening right now. That's coming out of a lot of different, uh, offices and organizations, the AG's office, the ACLU, uh, the Immigration Office, right? They're, they're doing a Know Your Rights so people have questions. I don't know all the answers to their questions. It goes far beyond the school walls, right? Um, so I know, uh, we just received, uh, today some information, um, from Senator Peano's office is going to sponsor a virtual Know Your Rights, uh, this week. So we're, we're trying to gather all those things to make sure that we have that information to give to our families that is, right, accurate, uh, uh, appropriate. Uh, we're also working with our adult ed director and the Nevins Library to potentially host a Know Your Rights virtual or, I mean, the, the list, the line for that right now is long, right? The waiting list for that is long because everybody's asking for it because we're not the experts. the experts. So, I think that's the hardest part is we need to make sure that we're sharing with our families, I don't, I can't answer all your questions, you know, here's a place that can help you. So, we're gathering all of that, we're, we're going to be messaging our families, we're supporting our families that are calling us right now with the information we have. And so, it's a lot, right? So, we're getting, we're getting different kinds of phone calls right now about all three of those topics, the federal funding, the LGBTQ, some questions about funding for certain courses or certain textbooks, certain topics. So, we're not doing anything or changing anything until we know we have to do it. And I don't know if that'll ever come, right? And so, I have really taken a pause on understanding, wrapping my mind around everything that's coming our way because it is a lot. And I'm telling you, it's coming from legal advisories, our legal counsel, Desi's legal counsel, MASs's legal counsel, right, the AG's office. I mean, it's coming from all different angles right now. But, you know, the bottom line is we're going to support all of our students like we always do and always will. And if they need support, we have people in place to help them. We hope that we have more resources collected to be able to seek, you know, to be able to provide those resources outside of school for, for students and families who have questions about these things. So, I thought that it was important for me to say that to all of you that there are a ton, I mean, every day something is coming at us and we're just, you know, we need to all wrap our minds around it a little bit and not be too reactive to everything. So, that's the approach we're taking. So, I want to share that with you. And then the second thing is, so, I don't know if that answered your question, but right now, I don't know, right? Like, I don't know because there's, again, so many different people coming with different, this executive order, but now it's getting, you know, it's, he doesn't have the authority to do it, but he does. I mean, it's all of that. We're going to let everybody work it out before somebody says, hey, this is what it actually means for us here in Massachusetts for public schools, right? And so, that's, and we've gotten some good advice to do just that because it's, it's going to eat us all up if we're sending out advisories every day. It's going to confuse people, it's going to upset people. You know, I don't think we need to do that right now. The second thing is that for, as far as the federal funding goes, you know, we did have the scare with the federal freeze. That was a little chaotic because everybody, we all thought that was very real. It still could be very real, but again, that was just a perfect example of it's going to freeze at 5:30 tonight. We had a few moments during that day because we have about $5 million of salaries in federal grants right now. And then it was lifted, right, removed, no freeze. So, we are expecting some changes and we're going to prepare for those changes. And unfortunately, what that means is we're going to prepare a budget that won't include the full amount of entitlement grants, Title I, II, III, and IV. And the IDEA grants are all federal entitlement grants. That's what is being discussed right now. So, when you're talking about how it impacts us, we have $1.6 million in Title I funds, that is all salaries. We have about $1.7 million in IDEA, that is all salaries, all but a chunk of change, you know, a small chunk of change. And then we have Titles II, III, and IV, majority salaries. And so, it's, it's, you're looking at over $3 million, $3.5 million, just like that in the grants I just said that are in our salaries. So, we always remove those from the, right? They're in as far as positions, but we remove that from the financial dollar amount. I think this year, we're going to have to include all of them in the dollar amount and, and backfill, right? So, whatever we get from Title I, maybe, Title II, Title III, we start then taking off salaries from that, from what we get. Now, we never, we never get that final amount until July. I don't know what to expect this spring, right? But I want, I don't know how else to prepare a budget for you to see the real part of what we're dealing with. So, that's, we have, we have all settled on that, that we are going to pull out all the staff that are paid currently on IDEA and Title I, so you could see it. You're going to have to see it, what that looks like. Those, we're, we're, we are a school-wide Title I-supported district, so it's not target assistance. So, we have staff, regular ed staff, that is being supported in all five of our schools under Title, the Title Grants. We have specialized support staff, some of our SLIF teachers and ESL teachers are in some of the Title Grants. And then we have a wide array of special education staff, related service providers, resource rooms, you know, ASD teachers and such in the IDEA grant. So, when I have the information that I believe is the final information, you will have it. I just, I don't know when we're actually going to get that information. So, it's very unsettling, but we're going to prepare and plan the best we can for, for what potentially is ahead of us. This is not the year to make any assumptions, right? Typically, we make an assumption that we're going to get the same amount and we move forward, we get that amount in July. That's how it's been for the 20 years I've been in the system. I'm not sure that's how that's going to work this year. So, I will definitely make sure that's part of the process as we go through it.
Vice Chair.
Just a quick question. What about the lunch program? Is that federally funded?
It is.
I think it is. So, how does that, if we don't have federal funds for the lunch program, what sort of impact will that have?
So, I don't know the answer to that either, but it's federally funded, but it's also state. It's got a, it's got a dual category right now, so it's probably more complicated. But there's a federal component to it, there's also a state component to it. So, again, we're unsure how that's going to be affected. Because the state of Massachusetts has subsidized it, we would get subsidized anyway by the federal government, so I'm not sure.
I'll recognize the student representative.
So, you mentioned the possibility of an ICE agent coming to our school. That one, I was particularly, had some questions about, was a bit concerned about because of the implications it has on like the student body overall. And the last meeting I had with some Desi representatives, we were informed that districts received procedure on how to like handle that situation were to happen. I was wondering if our school has a certain approach that they have worked out.
Tayab, that's a great question. So, yes, so the procedure is very, very simple. If an ICE agent or any other agent looking for students from any other agency, somebody's looking for a student, that person, people are going to be directed to my office. So, the secretaries, the principals, they all know we're going to welcome people, figure out what they want, which is what we do now. And then if they need further information, review, if they have documentation, they will be directed to my office for that review. Because there are, there are reasons why some people may have to get into buildings and have access to students, but it's a review of that documentation to make sure it's the right documentation that you need for that purpose.
Yeah, that follows, I learned that like it, they should not be allowed unless they like show warrants and that sort of thing.
Yeah, a judicial warrant is what is, is being expected at this point from a judge to, to allow them in the building. And that's something that my office would review with, with our attorneys, right? To make sure it's right, not documents we see every, every day.
And just for the membership to keep in mind, the agenda item is focusing on education aid. Just want to be cognizant of that for our discussion on school committee side. Yep. The box has been opened, but I'm going to close the box because the item on the agenda is for education aid. Member Dzoglio, do you have a statement or question to make about education aid?
Well, then, I would like for future to bring up this immigration thing because I think it's going down a wrong path and I have some...
Member Dzoglio, education aid, we can have...
Yeah, but I would like to add that to future agenda because I, I don't like where this conversation went. So, I would like to bring it up so there's factual information to be provided, not just to everybody, but to the public.
Duly noted. I just want to make sure that we're adhering to the open meeting law.
Yep.
Any other questions about state education aid? Member Donovan?
I'll leave this to you to determine if this is appropriate.
As a point of information, MASs this week held, held a fabulous seminar for what school committee members need to know. I attended, it was online. I believe it may be taped, it may be something everyone would want to watch, but it describes exactly what the laws are and the role of the school committee, which is basically to know these things. And I would recommend if, very respectfully, it's certainly worth watching it. I will find out if it was taped. It was terrific. Thank you.
Any other questions about state education aid? Member Willett?
I know you're going to roll me out of the order, but we're a sanctuary state. That has to be emphasized. Yet a Conwell versus Lund decision of 2017, we should be all on the same page. We are a sanctuary state, the legislature hasn't corrected that, the governor hasn't corrected that. They don't honor detainees for criminal convicted illegal aliens. So, once we're on the same page, right, we provide a service to the students just like we provide a service at emergency rooms under federal law.
I just want to make sure we're adhering to the open meeting law.
Well, yeah, because we've had that, we've had conversations that were brought up about regulations and about ICE and about the budget. And I didn't bring those up, other people did, okay? So, we can have it as an agenda item and I'll bring up the same concerns I had before. The governor says we're not a sanctuary state. Conwell versus Lund decision of 2017 would beg to differ with her. And she's the governor, she was a former attorney general, she should know that. The current attorney general should know that. The legislature was going to be empowered to make the change and every single time they put up the Safe Communities Act, which would codify sanctuary cities in a sanctuary state. And I don't think the vast majority of Americans are in favor of that. In terms of regulations, I remember voting against the Biden regulations on Title IX, and I'm consistent, I would vote against the Trump regulations of Title IX because it didn't originate from an act of Congress. So, it's nice how to have the flip side of an issue. Biden Title IX regulations, absolutely, let's approve it. And I voted against it respectfully. The Trump regulations, no, let's hold off on it. I'm consistent on that because it did not originate from an act of Congress. Thirdly, there should be a whole harmless provision from the State House of any reductions in state funding that results because of federal aid, we should take that into account. But also realize there's talk of block grants, not throwing out the baby with the bathwater, not eliminating all the resources to the states, they want to do block grants. So, there should be a balancing act to the conversation. Now, if they totally reject block grants and they total eliminate all that funding, I'll be on the front lines in strong opposition. But I think exactly what the superintendent indicated, let's not jump to conclusions. She presents a budget of her wish list of items that we can support, but we don't have the resources, excuse me, resources for it. The same thing can apply with the cutbacks. If she wants to put that in a, in a package for us, I don't have a problem with that. But let's not rush to conclusions on these issues. They're complex issues that worthy of conversation and constructive, respectful debate. Thank you.
And thank you for circling back to finances. So, just to reiterate, we're having a, I think, a productive conversation, but just as a note for the membership housekeeping item, the superintendent is not subject to the open meeting law, the student representative is not subject to the open meeting law, although it, subject may come to the floor in terms of discussion from other individuals. We here as members of the body, we are subject to that, so I just want to reiterate that. Do we have other questions, comments, concerns regarding the education aid update? If not, we will move on to the report from the Assistant Superintendent of Student Services. Do we have a presentation or any questions? Member Shabilia?
Microphone. So, I just, I want to just point out for anybody watching at home or sitting around the table or hanging out in the back of the room here, that last month, we increased our year-to-date expense for transportation under McKinney-Vento by $176,000 in one month. Am I reading that right?
You're reading that correctly, but that's really based on when the invoices have come in.
Invoices, yeah, but, but $176,000. So, to year-to-date, for just invoices that have shown up yet, almost $304,000.
Correct.
Of...
Homeless transportation.
That is not part of our regular transportation program, which we're going to discuss later, which comes with its own ugly line item amount. But getting beyond that, I was looking at the residency report and I know that it's a hot topic and I know that Member Donovan is on the crusade, which I 1 million percent support to streamline this packet, but I have some questions on this, this chart. 23 kids have been withdrawn from the district for one reason or another under this program. So, by, by my math and using just easy number of 15K for population spend per pupil, I know it's not 15K, but easy math, $345,000. Were those kids counted in the last October numbers? Or do we, they were? So, this is, this is saving us money, but I know the answer to that is no, it's not because as these kids go out, other kids are coming in. So, is it improving class size as we lose people?
Probably negligible at this point because those 23 kids are spread out over pre-K through 12.
So, no.
No, it's negligible because you, and the kids coming every Monday, we get the report from FRC of the new kids enrolling. So, I don't think it's a, it's a, you know, 23 out, 23 in, but it's, it's a constant in coming in the district.
So, I guess then it's...
And those are, I'm sorry, and those are not including the kids who tip, who are withdrawing, right? These are residency withdraws, but we're talking about other kids that might be withdrawing because they...
They're moving or whatever other reason.
Yeah, 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 from our process, right? So, there's added numbers to this as well. At the same time, there's added numbers to kids coming into the district.
So, I guess it's also a fair statement to say that the effort here in the 23 withdrawn are not freeing up staff to do other necessary activities.
No.
It's not making busing more efficient? It's not, I mean, are these, are these kids with discipline issues, high needs, is it...
I'd have to look at each profile.
I mean, I, I guess in going back to the conversation we had last week, I, I fail to see the benefit to this. I know that everyone's going to get all bent out of shape because how dare I question residency, but it sounds like we're doing a lot of work, we're already short on staff, and there is not any identifiable benefit on the questions I just asked to what this is doing.
But the good news is...
Oh, I love good news, lay it on me.
That, that Member Donovan and I did meet last week to start talking about a different way to present.
All right.
This information, what information would be the most beneficial based on some of the conversation from all of you last time, some additional conversation from us going through it? So, I think we have some ideas of how to make this information more beneficial so that you can see, and you kind of asked the question already of like, of the 23, what are the profile, what did that do for us, right? What was the impact to the school? What's the impact of the kids coming into the district, right? That's information that would be very helpful for you all to have. So, we had that conversation ready. I have some sketches on my desk of sort of what that could look like and what information. So, I anticipate bringing that to you guys in the March business meeting to see if this is the kind of template that would be more useful.
I support that. I mean, if you could come to me and say, listen, residency produced this benefit, I'm good with it. But if this is an exercise in futility because we need to make some people feel good, this is a waste of time and I don't support it. So, thank you.
Member Dun, uh, Member Dzoglio?
Point of, clarification from...
Point of, clarification from Member Shabilia. So, you don't believe that we should be checking residency?
No, sorry.
That's not what I said. I said you should show a benefit, and if you can't show a benefit, let's have our time be worthwhile instead of chasing ghosts.
So, I'm so confused. The way the residency is set up, we check to see if residency is existent. So, it is a benefit because if people don't belong in our district, they should be out of our district.
But where is the benefit if those kids were counted in the October numbers?
So, it's about, because they're not residents, and if class sizes are going to go up...
But they're not.
But they might.
But they're not.
But they might.
We need order, please.
I'll keep going. If we have to cut teachers and add class sizes because of the governor's budget, I don't want a kid that doesn't belong in our district, in our district.
But, Member DeZoglio, the superintendent just said that we're not improving class size.
But things could change with federal funding.
And when they do, we can address it.
Oh, so we'll wait down the road. Okay.
May I make a comment? So, I think we're not saying, so this is a policy that we would have to continue to follow. I think what I'm hearing, and this is what I heard from the committee last time, which is why we had the conversation, was the information and the reporting, the way it's presented, isn't as useful as it can be. So, it's not that we're not going to stop doing this. It's a policy. We have to continue with our residency checks and our policy. So, it's not that it's not happening, but how are we going to present it to all of you that makes sense? So, this information might be part of a larger piece of information that is more useful, like how many students have withdrawn? Why have they withdrawn? What were their service delivery needs? How many students have enrolled in the month of January? What were their service needs? And so, you can see when I actually say to all of you, right, the needs of our students are changing. If I were to compare what our students were in 1920 to what they are today, or what they are today to 2009, 10, they're different, right? So, this number, this is the chart that Member Donovan and I were trying to map out a little bit, right? So, this might be incorporated into something that might be, you know, these narratives might be in a chart that just makes a little more sense to everybody for what is within your purview for when we talk about budget, needs, positions, things like that. So, nobody's saying that it's not important, and we would still have to do it. I think what I'm hearing, and please correct me if I'm wrong, is the way it's being reported out and not making any unnecessary extra work to report something out that isn't useful for all of you to think about, to act on, to see the impact.
Agreed.
Okay.
Vice Chair?
The comment about the Days Inn closing. I would like to know, and I know that we don't know right now, but the financial impact of it closing because it's going to escalate our transportation costs. It's, it's going to actually increase a lot of our costs as opposed to decrease our costs. So, I would like that tracked as best as possible and reported to us of what the impact of it closing is going to be on us and how that number is going to go up, because it, unfortunately, it's going to impact our budget with an increase, not a decrease.
Yes. So, there's, there's potential for it to increase. There's also potential for it to decrease. We don't know where the families are actually going to end up. If they end up in permanent housing, it decreases for us, right? So, we really, I mean, we, we are having frequent meetings with Sean from CTI. So, we're all kind of getting information at the same time. The mayor got it maybe an hour before I got it from Jesse that same day. So, we're, this is all in just real time. We're getting information. He's actually on site and doesn't have probably as much information as the mayor and I, and he's on site with the families. So, I just, I think as it progresses to where the families end up, it's how we're going to just look at each individual family and what that situation is. I think the hope is that they do get permanent housing, and again, that changes the dynamic for us. But we'll see, because if they all don't get permanent housing, then there is a cost factor that we have to consider and that we'll know. We don't know if we'll know that by the time we're presenting the budget to you at the end of March. That could be an ongoing fluid number and dollar amount that we're just going to have to project, you know, an estimated projection right now and see where we land come July.
And then my question, my second question is just for information. When a student is on the McKinley-Vento Act, how many years can they claim McKinley-Vento? Like, is it endless, or is there a, at some point, there's a cutoff and say, all right, you know what? You, you've lived on this couch for three years. You're done.
There is no expiration date or timeline, so it depends until their status changes.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Other questions? Mr. Chairman, Member Willet?
So, I'm familiar with that system. So, the Section 8 voucher program, even on an emergency basis, it will take years for someone to get into permanent housing. Now, I'm not sure about bypassing current applicants. That's a discussion for the State House. But some communities will have what's called a choice voucher under Section 8. So, my impression is that there's no other shelter in Methuen. It was located at the Days Inn. They will relocate those families, and what my original premise was is that we have to spread the obligation statewide. I know there was a certain community, they welcomed the group for one day, and they sent them to a military base, okay? How that's humane, I don't know. I know the neighboring community of Andover had five homeless, where at one point, we had 100 at one location. And we had multiple, multiple deficiencies and violations and inspections that kept on reoccurring. To me, it's like a slumlord mentality over there. I'm glad it's closing. I don't buy into the premise that automatically it's going to cost this district because if you look at the Section 8 voucher program, it's years of a waiting list. Some communities will entertain a choice voucher under Section 8. So, my impression is they're going to disperse and not similar to what they did in Ohio of clustering. But at the same time, too, the State House is already putting up a doormat of saying, no, no more admittance. And that's something that the State House should have been doing two or three years ago. So, we're playing catch-up on the criminal element that should be removed, and we're not a welcome mat anymore because we have limited resources. And I can't imagine someone from 2.5 billion to $5 billion saying that that was a cost savings to school districts and localities versus what closing the Days Inn and other hotels and motels was somehow going to cost us more. I don't buy into that premise. The Eagle Tribune should have done some follow-up on that. So, that's my two cents on that.
Any other discussion? If not, we'll keep moving. We have next the report from the Director of Human Resources. Any questions regarding that report? Member Shabilia?
I like the layout and how we can see back to September, looking at the Unit C positions. In September, we were at 36, and there's been a steady decline to close January being only 13, which in my mind, I think, wow, that's awesome. We've brought in, what, 23 new PAs? But then my question becomes, we continuously hear how there are no bodies. Does that mean we hired 23 new people? And there are 23 positions that were open that are now filled?
Yes, but it doesn't necessarily, it means it's by either a hired Methuen Public School employee.
Or the contractor.
Or the contractors, right? Because we removed, if it's contract or employee, we removed them from the sheet on the back.
All right.
So, I have, I have legitimately 13 positions that do not have anybody in them right now that we're, you know, kind of muddling the, the schedules along with people filling those holes, yeah, in the building.
And then looking at the Unit A nurses, Bs, and the RBT one, 16, so September to October was a good...
Good month.
Good month. And then we, we, we hopped on the slippery slide there. Does this, is this, there's no, oh, my, my, my words are escaping me. There is no contractors in this group, is there?
There are a few contractors in this group.
Is that what accounts here in the, the swing? Because it looks like we hired seven people, and then we scared them away. Like, that's, that's what these numbers look like.
So, yeah, it's hard to, it's hard to capture that, but that's... We've, we've had some swing in the nursing staff right over the whole, course of the whole year, I think, as of today.
For the good.
For the good, but I'm saying like, we've had like openings, you know, like just kind of over, but we have them at this point filled. So, that's been very trying. We have positions that people are resigning for now. That same thing is still happening where somebody's given us a one-week notice or a two-week notice, and they're gone. That has been happening pretty steadily, one here, one there, all the way through the school year and all different buildings in different positions. So, like, I'm, I'm, I don't have a lot of like rhyme or reason to some of those positions.
So, with the folks that are leaving, especially the folks leaving in mid-school calendar year.
Yep.
How often are we able to get those folks to do an exit interview? And I see Colleen sitting in the back, so I don't know if you have the answer. Maybe we have to get it from her.
You're looking, you're looking straight through me.
Well, I, well, I see her, and I saw her as I was asking the question, so...
I would say that all the principals do a very decent job of doing an exit interview with all of the staff. Sometimes we don't get, they don't, we don't get that feedback that we're looking for. I know Gina's gotten good feedback and done some exit interviews with staff on the why and the how. I've done some myself to, to see what I can do to figure out why people don't want to be here and what I can do to help them stay. I've had some of those conversations myself this year, so I think we're all probably more than just fill out this Google survey, than, yeah, really in tune to the one-to-one, have a conversation and really figure out what's going on with folks and what we can do. And sometimes it has worked. We've had some really positive conversations with staff about the reasons why, and we've been able to work through some things and kind of fix those reasons, right? And make things better for folks that decided not to leave. So...
I get that. A lot of it comes down to money.
It does.
I mean, that's the perpetual elephant in our room.
Not all of it, but a lot of it.
Good chunk.
Yeah, good chunk.
But I guess I would, I would like to see us, and I've, I've done my own exit interviews in the past. I've been on both sides of that table, and sometimes they're superficial. It's a pat on the head, and you're out the door regardless of what side of the table you're on. I would just, I would hope that as the revolving door continues to move, which it always will, that will never stop ever, no matter how much we pay or how good the district is or anything else, that we see what we can do to capture even more information, to continue to learn from what's going on. That's my, kind of my hope and dream there. Thank you.
We agree.
Any other questions regarding the HR report? If not, we'll keep moving onto the facilities report. Any questions? Member Willet?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We are making progress. It's still a work in progress. I am grateful for the report. I'm also grateful that I think the Marsh Boiler was the most pressing the schools to be replaced. So, that being on the capital improvement list, I think, is, is very worthy. And I think we're making headway on talking about removing carpets and dealing with other issues. I would like to still have this continued in, in future meetings until we get some stabilization in, in the system. But I like the reports that we are receiving. Thank you.
Member DeZoglio?
Thank you. Again, I'm, I'm happy with the, the reports, but again, like I, I've said, I wish these issues were brought up in the past. And I continue to want to know why we got to this point. And, yeah, that, I'm just happy that we're, we're making progress. But I, every time I look at this report, and I continue to look at it, I continue to wonder why didn't we have these lists or have these tensive urgencies back when, for the last five years, that I've been on school committee? And like I said, I've taken accountability for it, but it should have been brought to our attention. So, that's all.
Any other questions, discussion? If not, Superintendent, I'll let you start the discussion regarding Board of Health. Oh, excuse me. Member Maxwell, do you have a question?
I just wanted to say, like, I, to comment on the schools, I think that the deep cleaning of the Timoney was great. I hope that it doesn't remain to be superficial and, you know, kind of go back to its old ways. And I noticed that the, what was the other school? The Tenney, I actually went back for a kind of a tour after the last meeting on the facilities report to see completed items. And, you know, we noticed a few things that maybe needed some more work, and I, I can honestly say that those have been addressed nicely. And so, I like to see the progression in that. I do want to say that, like, to say that things haven't been mentioned over the last five years, that's just untrue. I mean, I know as a parent, I've mentioned things for the past five years. So, I'd like to, you know, just make it, like, things happen, things get out of control. It's being, you know, it's being handled right now, and hopefully, it doesn't just go to the wayside and disappear because we need to address it, and we need to stay consistent, and I hope that that's what we continue to do. Thank you.
Thank you, Member Maxwell. Superintendent, we have the Board of Health update.
So, which one are you looking for, Mayor? The Timoney one or the, or the, both are Timoney?
Just going down the agenda, we have the facilities and then the...
So, we, yeah, so both of them are included here. I included on the back sheet some updates that the Board of Health came to the Timoney on the 28th. So, I included that. That was a communication between the Board of Health here in Methuen and the mayor and myself. So, I included that. I also, I think I included it on the front page, but we are having the State Department of Public Health did, which I'm grateful for, worked with me to come to the Timoney to do the same air quality testing that they did at the Marsh before Christmas break. So, they'll be there with a nice team of folks, hopefully not be there as long because they're bringing more people with them. But we will inform the staff and the families ahead of time because they will have to be in classrooms while they're occupied. So, it was a little, it's a little awkward, but we will make sure when we come back from vacation that all families are informed that there will be adults walking around the building. They're going to be with us as well. We'll divide and conquer like we did at the Marsh, so everybody knows where they're going. But we expect that, and I think it took them about three weeks to give us, it was like a three-week turnaround time for their, the reporting to come back, which also is available on the website. So, we will continue to, continue working with everybody at this point, and thank you. And, and I just want to agree, I, I didn't get to comment, but on Member Maxwell's, we are definitely, this isn't going to go by the wayside. I think we have some solid plans in place. We're even working on some different ways for that accountability and checking in and looking at it on a daily basis, weekly, monthly, reporting what systems can we put in place that are a little different for accountability. So, we're looking through all those things. So, thank you.
Any other questions?
If I could just make one more comment.
Member Maxwell?
Thank you. I, I would just like to kind of touch out again on, on my, you know, my feedback on the reports. I, I think that it's fair to acknowledge the custodians and the efforts that they have gone into with these reports because it's been some pretty high-demanding stuff. So, I think that we deserve, they deserve that recognition.
Awesome. Thank you. Agreed.
Member Willet?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Is there a plan in place to have the Department of Public Health visit the remaining schools beyond the Marsh and the Timoney at some point? I know the CGS really didn't have that many problems, and the high school is a, is a new structure. I know the CGS really didn't have that many problems and the high school is a, is a new structure. Um, but obviously if we can have that opportunity just to get some feedback.
I think at a local level, we can make those plans, but we cannot, the state actually, uh, he is a, a. The gentleman from the Department of Public Health, the State Department of Public Health came in and said that they do not. Uh, typically go to all the schools and I kind of said, would you please, please, please uh, come back to one school just so we have two different reports, so our community can see that. Uh, so it is not typical for them to come into all five schools, not something we can dictate. Uh, they did this because we asked them to, uh, and again, I, I'm also doing them a little bit of a favor. They're doing some training that day while they're at the Timoney. So the gentleman has been phenomenal to even come back to do this. Uh, I'm trying to work with them and bring back a whole team. You want to train to do air quality testing, that's why they're bringing more people. Uh, you know, we want some feedback as well on, on these things, but we can't dictate that they come in. Uh, it's not something that they typically do and they did share that with us when they came to the Marsh.
Even like in rotating years, if we, on a annual basis, just once?
We'll certainly keep in touch with them.
Yeah, he's, he's been wonderful, so.
I want to say the report I reviewed from the state, I think was phenomenal in the recommendations. And I think we're going to hopefully implement many of those recommendations. But if that's the template, if we had like one designated school every year on a rotating basis.
We can talk to him when he comes back in, in February and see what the, what the process is to keep it going. Uh, but it's not something that they will do annually and they won't do all schools at least.
And I understand it's not a mandatory nature. We can't just demand them, we just, it's, we're asking them to come on a rotating basis.
Yep, we can talk to them.
And thankfully too, at the local level, we have our local inspectors who, um, you know, we brought them back to the Timoney. We're going to bring them back for re inspections at the other schools. And we're going to keep uh, up with that regiment of uh, just checking in and uh, we'll at least have access to more information at the local level.
Excellent. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Member DeZoglio?
Um, just going off of um, the custodians, one of the things um, that we need to. Also, I've been talking to custodians, one of the things they are worried about, the deep cleaning that. This will become a permanent thing where we're having outside people come in and do those cleanings and they're worried about privatization. I just want to make sure that we do not do that to our custodians. They were under manpower for so many years. And the fact that they end up privatizing and ruining, uh, like I said, we've had these conversations prior. I just want to make sure that we're not trying to do that to them. Of course not.
Yeah, the whole objective of this has been to help get all of the schools up to speed going forward. You know, we have tremendous custodial staff at each of our schools and uh, you know, if anything, we need to continue to expand and invest in our custodians, not do less, so.
And the mayor and I met with them together, the custodial union, the mayor and I met with them together in my office to actually discuss this and to move forward. About what this means for this year.
Yeah, it just, may I?
Member Donovan, the membership leader?
Just to build on that and your point, Member DeZoglio, so there was a side letter, am I correct? Where the custodians as a union agreed.
Yes.
So that was done.
Cleaning, again, that was the, the mayor and I were in the room with the custodial union with.
Thank you for reminding me. Okay, thank you.
Um, clarification and, and I remember the side letter, but I, and I might, might have not worded it right, but it was for just like the Timoney? Or was it say all?
We have updated side letter.
Okay.
That's what we met with them with together.
Member Shabili?
So I was going to save it until the other business section, but I guess my request is for our next regular meeting. If there could be something planned for a discussion on how we plan to maintain. After we spend all of the city's wonderful money on these deep cleans. Because to Member Maxwell's point, I think to everyone's general well-being. I don't think we want to be doing this on a yearly basis, any more than the custodian wants us doing this on an annual basis. But given the budget implications coming quickly over the horizon and. The fact that I don't foresee us fully staffing that department by any stretch of anyone's imagination. We, we have to come up with some kind of a plan, good, bad or ugly, we need a plan. And we don't, I, I'm not privy to one yet and I would really, really like to be.
So that's the purpose of the task force and we're going to continue to meet and work on that over time.
Okay.
Not, not much else we could do, but you know, keep on and do what we can to plan.
I think part of that task force is, my role has to be to present to all of you during the budget presentation what our plan is. So that has to be presented to you all and we have to have that when we're presenting that to you. Because if that's including staff, what does that mean? Why am I asking for more staff or different staff or a different structure? What does that mean? Uh, we need time, that's something that we have to work out.
All right.
As we prepare that, to share both at the task force meeting and then to share as part of the actual package for you guys.
And I think we have a really strong roadmap in terms of addressing these issues going forward. You know, right around the time of Thanksgiving and in the lead up to the holiday break. Uh, the reports of, for instance, rodent activity at the Timoney was just off the charts. And in the time since we've had the deep clean, there's been expanded effort on the part of the custodial staff to really bring everything up to speed there. Addressing the issues in the inspectors' reports, uh, additional exclusion efforts taking place to keep. Uh, you know, critters out of the building, you know, at this point, uh, we had. Uh, during recent discussion with some teachers who were involved with the task force, one of the teachers on the Timoney indicated that teachers will submit. A report whenever they see, you know, rodent and we had that, I think. Significant activity uh, before the holidays and now according to this most recent report from this teacher. Uh, sightings of rodents at the Timoney virtually nonexistent at this point. I can't speak to the last week, but in recent weeks. Uh, it's plummeted in terms of uh, sightings, so clearly that, to me, that indicates that uh, what we did worked. And I think that provides us with a solid blueprint going forward to ensure that we're keeping up with this and ensuring that the schools are clean.
Agreed.
Member Willett?
And again, I understand what uh, Member DeZoglio is, is saying from a certain standpoint and. I've never been critical of the custodians on the front lines. Wh- what happened was there was a, a gap in coverage. Some custodians are on uh, medical leave. Uh, some are sick, some go on vacation breaks, so the idea was to supplement. At the high traffic schools and I think that the, the Timoney and the Tenney were designated as high traffic schools because of the activities at both schools. And because of the nature of the architecture of the both schools, they have unique features. It was that to do a deep cleaning at, at both of those schools. So the things I'm concerned about is things that would be outside the purview necessarily of custodians. Is the ventilation systems, um, what the mayor's talking about, the latest high tech with Pestend. That would be outside the purview of custodians. So I think we're trying to not supplant the custodians, we're trying to supplement uh, because there's gaps. Now, I talked to Mr. Goslin if it's coming from the rental fees and if we need to reexamine the rental fees. And also working in partnership with the mayor and as Member Donovan has indicated, I think this has been the strongest partnership. The scold apartment has ever had with an incumbent mayor of realizing an emergency situation. And again, you could say, you could have festering for years, but my mentality has always been, once an issue arises, we have to correct it. Now, we could talk about the boiler, the, the Marsh and debate, but the boiler is on the front lines of being taken care of. There's, there's carpet issues and also the cabinets and the bookcases and that's outside the purview of the custodians. Um, but if we're not tackling the egress issues and they have a way of going into the buildings, the rodents. We're not, that's just not going to solve the situation and you ask for reports and I ask for reports. And I think it's important to just have like a hybrid approach, but also the, the governor's budget might limit us in that. Um, I might want to add custodians, but then I'm talking about class sizes. So maybe it's something we could look at the rental fees, uh, but I think there has to be some component of deep cleaning and ventilation work. And things that are outside the purview of the custodians and it was never my in, interpretation of, and I mentioned Doug. At, at, at the Timoney was phenomenal and I know Member Maxwell and I visited with, with him and he had a gung ho approach. And I know for myself, I come here like an hour or two early at the meeting sometimes and I see the, the custodians working and I go through the schools. And I went through the Methuen High School before the meetings just to see and they're constantly working. Now you might have some derelict workers, but I think that's very on the margins and we'll follow up on that, but. In terms of privatization, to me, was never going to be entertained and I'm a very conservative person, so I just want to lay your feelings on that. Thank you.
I, I want to be cognizant of time. It's almost eight o'clock and we're still on staff reports, so we've got to keep moving. Do you have one quick?
I just one quick, just, so that was a concern, uh, like I, I had all trust that this committee would not want to privatize. It was a concern by custodians that I've talked to. They were worried that they would be losing shifts and stuff like that because of privatization. So it's good that I have another member that believes the same way. Yeah.
Uh, we're going to move on now to uh, the out of school suspensions and disciplinary actions report. Any questions from the committee? Member Willett?
I don't know if I'm noticing a little spike with the, the cell phone violations at the high school. I mean, it's not like astronomical, but is that something we, we're talking about? They're getting detention and it, I don't know if it's working with a certain group of students, if it's repeat, repeat offenders. Um, if it's just isolated, um, something that again, obviously as a committee, we would have to explore additions to the policy. I'm not interested in confiscating the phones. I don't think that's the right approach, but is the pouch might work or? I was just concerned, all of a sudden it was like a little bit of a spike on that.
I. Mr. Grot was still here, but um, I, I think from my perspective, and I don't know the actual answer to this, but if you are asking for my opinion. I think uh, Dr. Golovski and I have both seen after break, I think the kids need a little reminder about the rules. Um, I think that's safe to say, yep. So after they came back from the winter break, I think there was probably a little uptick. Uh, from folks and the staff and administration just needed to continuously remind them. We'll do that again after February break. We, that's a typical behavior that we see uh, in schools. Sometimes they need that reminder every few months and this break. Uh, I know when we walked through the high school after the, the winter break. We acknowledged that the kids might need a little reminder about the policy and the headphones and such, so. Uh, I think that hopefully we won't see any more upticks, but it makes sense that there was an uptick after the break, but. I don't know if they are from the same student, you know, I don't know the details of what the makeup of that twenty nine is. Yep.
Vice Chair?
But for the high school, it's headphones, not cell phones, correct? So it's the kids with headphones on.
Headphones. Yep. They just need a reminder about that, keeping their ear, AirPods in and their headphones on and, yep, just seeing more of that.
Any other questions, discussion?
Ooh, Tayab has a good one.
Yeah, I think it's pretty cool because I get to see firsthand um, the effectiveness of the pouches. Um, for the record, I believe in my seven pretty rigorous class uh, schedules, I've seen a lot, a huge decrease in the amount of phone usage. And I think um, in regard to the pouches effectiveness, most of my teachers, if not all of them, actually do not um, actively like. Use the pouches, but I think it stands as like a symbol and as a reminder for students and it still is really effective um, in those advanced classes.
Thank you.
That's great. Thank you, Tab.
Other questions? All right, we'll move on. Old business and other pending matters, none on the agenda. We're on a new business. We need a motion in a second. To award the fiscal year twenty six school transportation bid to NRT. Twenty seven Katrina Road, Chelmsford, Massachusetts, in the amount of uh, brace yourselves, ten million dollars, seven hundred and ninety-four thousand eighty-four dollars.
Still moved.
Second.
Motion from the vice chair, second from Member DeZoglio. Discussion.
Do we want to let Rich go first?
Yes.
If he's still there. Rich, are you still present? Oh, right, I'm sa, that, that was awesome uh, that you got to view the first two hours of our, our meeting. Um, so we're on to transportation, so if you just want to share with the committee, the memo that's in front, the process that we went through. Mr. Goslin will add anything, so will I and anybody else in the Transportation Subcommittee that feels so inclined. Thank you.
Well, let me start with, uh, we issued a bid dated in, in the end of October, October thirtieth. Uh, we opened in January third, uh, and between the uh, issuance of the bids and the bid opening. We wrote seven addendums. Uh, we asked, answered everyone's questions uh, by written addendum. So it was a level playing field. Everyone was working from the same data. Uh, we sent big pa, packages to seventy-six, seventy-six people representing sixty-four different potential bidders across the country. Uh, at the bidders meeting, we had nine companies uh, show up. And when it came time to open bids, we actually had bids from four different bidders. Uh, two of them were uh, basically uh, van companies. Uh, when we went through our due diligence, uh, they, we found that they were not responsive and responsible. They were only bidding on certain portions of the, of the contract. Uh, and uh, we ended up with NRT Bus and First Student. We looked at uh, uh, NRT because they were the apparent low bidder. Uh, there was approximately uh, four million dollars difference between the NRT bid and the First Student bid. Uh, and uh, as I said, we went through our due diligence with regard to the, the other two companies and. In the letter, you have uh, the reasons why we uh, found them to be non-responsive and not responsible. Uh, we did spend a lot of time reviewing NRT, uh, primarily because of the issues last year and the issues at the beginning of this year. Uh, and uh, what we found uh, is that uh, uh, their references varied from satisfactory to good. Uh, we checked references from nineteen different school districts uh, across the state where they have contracts. So we spent a lot of time on the phone with people. Uh, and we found that their average rating uh, was uh, between uh, satisfactory and good. And most people qualified their uh, their responses to our, our, our questions by saying that uh, things were very good uh, most recently. Uh, but they did recognize that there were some issues last year and there were some issues at the start of this school year for some of the districts. Uh, and so given all of that, uh, we found uh, NRT to be the lowest responsive and responsible bidder. Uh, however, uh, we uh, were told originally that uh, the original bid price of eleven million. Eleven million five hundred and fifteen thousand three hundred and ninety-one dollars was beyond what the district could budget. Uh, and uh, as you uh, may be aware, under Mass General Law thirty B, you can negotiate reductions uh, with your low bidder and only with your low bidder. Uh, but only to the ex, extent that they do not prejudice another bidder. Uh, or they do not substantially change a bid specification or to prejudice the process. Uh, after negotiation with uh, with uh, Beacon Mobility uh, and NRT. Uh, they agreed to reduce their, their budget by seven hundred and twenty-one thousand three hundred and seven dollars and sixty-eight cents. Uh, and to ta, take some of that first year cost and spread it over subsequent years uh, to reduce the, the initial impact. Uh, I will call your attention to the fact that in the bid we document itself. We built in five additional single tier buses in the afternoon because of the problems that, that we had at the end of last year and at the start of this year. With regard to late buses in the afternoon primarily. Uh, so given all of that, uh, the recommendation is to award, well, there's three recommendations. One is uh, to uh, reject uh, the bid from SLA Logistics on the basis of their being non-responsive and not responsible. To reject the ba, the bid from uh, RG Services of Middleborough uh, on the basis of their being non-responsive and responsible. Uh, and that the bid entitled School Transportation dated October thirtieth be awarded to NRT Bus of Chelmsford. For the five years at the total first year cost of ten million seven ninety-four oh eight four. For those routes and transportation categories identified and that is inclusive, inclusive of their performance bond. identified, and that is inclusive of their performance bond. And on the base.
Rich, we lost you. I don't know if you can hand me. Hope you can't.
It's a, it's a high number in terms of the increase, but I must call your attention to the fact that you're coming off of a very low number this year. 417,000, $417 per bus per day is a very low rate. When you go to the 43370, that's a marginal increase on your regular transportation. So most of the increases were in your in district special ed and your out of district special ed transportation.
So when this went out to bid, there was a lot of thought that went into how it can be split, how we can maybe have buses for the high school and the lower school and have a different one for the middle school to see if we could diversify the bidder pool. Nobody wanted to see more diversification in the bidder pool than I did, and I think I drove certain folks crazy by pushing it. I know Ian won't say I did, but I, I know I did and I'm okay with it. There is, the reality is there's just, there's not enough people out there driving, owning bus companies. It's, it came down to two bidders and we don't have the other 4 million and change to bring in for a student. It's just not a reality for us when we're already worried about cutting folks. I do have one question though for you, Rich. Earlier in our meeting, I'm sure you got the pleasure of listening to the McKinney-Vento stuff where we talked about the busing. On this list, I just want to make sure these numbers are right. For the foster, the homeless foster line, there's a 36,500 number. We're about halfway through the year and we've already racked up a little, almost 304,000. So I just, I don't know how these numbers align.
If I could, if I could answer that, a lot of the homeless and foster transportation has rolled into your out of district special ed transportation where there's cost sharing of vans. And when you look at your reimbursement for McKinney-Vento, you, you pull those numbers out from the special ed transportation piece. So a lot of that is, I won't say buried into the out of district special ed, but they use those vehicles and those drivers for both special ed out of district and for McKinney-Vento students.
Thank you. So I think looking at this, there's, oh.
Can I just expand on that? Because that's not entirely true. So if a student is special education, requires transportation as part of their IEP and also homeless, then it pulls from those out of district numbers. But you have to understand that NRT this year could not accommodate all of our homeless requests, so we had to go out to bid for other providers. So we're paying other contracts right now with different transportation companies or agencies that have smaller fleets and able to do that on top of the invoices that we get charged from other districts in which we cost share.
I remember we did a, I think it was a Big Lose or something like that.
Yes, there's a couple, yep.
Big, it's just a name I won't forget. So, so how do, so Gina, how do you feel about that 36K number? Does that make sense to you? Because I don't know what this split is when I look at the year to date on the homeless versus this.
It will depend, like I can project the best I can on the kids that we have now, but that will change come the fall.
Okay.
That's hard, it's homeless is hard, it's hard to project.
I know that there's a lot of
Moving parts.
Big feelings, as member Donovan likes to say, when it comes to NRT. I get it, between their app and their general customer service and the presentation clown show they put up here at the podium that time, but I think the unfortunate reality is we are kind of over a barrel and that's where we're at.
Member DeZoglio?
So this, going over this, and again, I have a strong feeling about NRT for the last five years. The question I have, and again, we don't need to talk about it today, but from the fire station up to Laurel Street, that's Tenny if I'm correct. Because, yeah, if I'm, because my friend Rich lives at the corner of Laurel Street right before Forest Street and his kids go to Tenny if I'm correct. God, how many buses go over to that side that transports to Tenny? Do we know the number?
I can look that number up, but that has nothing to do with the bid.
No, no, no. I'm just saying to keep costs down in the future because it's based off of buses, right? So I think everybody's about to hear this idea is redistricting. This, I, I know that word and I've mentioned this about three years ago and everybody was, but if we redistrict that area to go to the Marsh instead of the Tenny, because Forest Street's right there, they could go all the way up to Forest Street, they're at the Marsh. How many buses would that save us? Because we could shift those kids to the Marsh down the road. That's, I think that's the, yeah, what?
What? I think, but seriously, I, I think that would be the best suggestion of actually cutting bus routes down and costs down and also maybe relieve some, I don't know how many kids go to the Tenny in the Marsh, but off the top of my head, but I think that would be a reduction from the Tenny and free up classroom spaces in those two. We might increase classroom sizes at the Marsh a little bit, but it would relieve some of those class sizes at the Tenny. But that's another conversation, but I think when we look at the bus company. Section of town you're talking about right now?
Yeah.
No child is walking from that section to either the Marsh or the Tenny.
No, 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 taking a bus. They're taking a bus though.
They gotta take a bus one way or the other.
Yeah, but you could also, if we expand it, but it might be easier for a parent to drop their kid off at the Marsh, but yeah.
I think what member DeZoglio was trying to say, and I can give you a perfect example. My old house on Laurel Street was Tenny. You went down Laurel Street and took the ride onto Oakland Ave, that was Marsh. You literally had to drive by my house to get to the Marsh, but yet my kids would have gone to the Tenny. I think what he's suggesting is not a full redistrict because I know that gives agenda to everybody, but a, a look at the map to see where we can realign our districts to give a more efficient flow, where I know Rich has come out the gate hard with the bell schedules, which, I mean, that's, that's up to the superintendent and team, but I think that looking at how we align our routes based off geography, which has undoubtedly changed since those lines were drawn, could only benefit the city. And I know North Andover just, not just, but recently hired a consultant to do that work for them. And I know when you use the C word, now you're talking money and that gets ugly too, but there, there, there may be efficiencies there that we could gain. And I think, not to speak for him, but I think that's what member DeZoglio was getting at.
Absolutely, because I've always wondered from the fire station up Laurel Street and Pelham Street where member Shabilia would say, and my friend Rich, he literally passes Forest Street, which he could take a left and go all the way down. He has to drive through the center of the fire station to drop his kid off at the Tenny, where he could literally take two minutes, take a left and go down Forest Street and be at the Marsh. I think that just, and again, I don't know redistricting, but just partial redistricting from the fire station up could just be a beneficial, and again, I know it's harder than to say, but that's just always been my thought of process. So I think that's actually a thought that we need to do, especially with this budget season coming, to think about, I'm not going to say before September, but if we can, to think about to cutting costs down. That's my suggestion, but thank you, member Shabilia for clarifying.
Thank you. Just to keep in mind, just to keep in mind, just for membership, we are talking about the bid for NRT, not about any other topic. So let's just keep on it. Any other discussion about NRT? We have
Yes.
Kristen and then member Donovan.
So that was actually my question, if we were talking about the, the contract and, and I'm concerned because we keep talking about contracts and we get to a point where we're at kind of a standstill where we're like, oh, well, we have no other option and we have to find another option if there is another option because we're promised these little things that seem miniscule in, in the grand scheme of things, but kids are still getting home at four, 4:30 and we don't have the, the buses or the drivers to get them there. There are still problems on buses that aren't being reported to the schools or to parents. And I think that like those are the things that we need to really focus on. I mean, those things seem really simple in, in the planning and, you know, those are just basic things. And I can speak from experience myself. My son doesn't get home until four o'clock right now and we live within a half a mile of the school. So I think that we need to find a way if we can to explore our options and if we can't, then we need to find a way to negotiate the contract with NRT to make sure that we have the right staff and the right bussing because it's kind of getting out of control with the app and the discipline, not the discipline, the, the behavior on the bus not being reported and the bus stops and there, there are multiple issues that seem to be very, very simple fixes that just aren't being looked at. That's my input, you know, I just, I just want to stop saying because we have to or because we have no other option. That's just, that's not how I feel and I want to kind of get away from that thought.
Mr. Mayor, if I may. Oh, sorry, go ahead. You were on the
Member Donovan?
Yeah. Just a quick question for the team. Is there any recourse when, for instance, the cameras on the buses don't work? Because I know that was a, was that ever part of that contract language, like there's a fine or something? Because I know that was always a big issue when you're trying to deal with a discipline concern and the cameras are supposed to work. That was a big discussion a couple of years ago. Where are we with that? And that might speak to what member Maxwell says.
I believe a lot, and Rich can probably kick in, the language in this contract would be a lot, lot more stringent and would be able to hold their feet to the fire a lot more readily than we could under the last contract.
And what would that look like though? Holding their feet to the fire, what would that look like to us?
There'd be language in this, so, so this is the bid award, right? And then the next step after if this is awarded, then now the contract is created based on the bid
Okay.
requirements, right? So there are a lot of things that this committee wanted in the RFP
Yep.
for, to hold them accountable. And so this, the contract that we would be moving forward with NRT is going to hold them accountable. So things have to work or, I mean, it's, it's all going to come down to money, right? Like so if you miss the route, we're not going to pay you. If, if they don't work for a certain amount of time, there's money loss, right? Like so I think all of that is going to be built into the contract development based on what we
Is that stuff not worked into the contract now? I'm sorry to interrupt, I just didn't want to, I wanted to make sure that was answered.
It's not.
Oh, okay.
Our, our contract now is, is very minimal and has left us with just not a lot of room to hold them accountable on their performance, which is why when, when Rich helped us write this bid, that list was much lengthier about what we want in this contract to hold them accountable. So they're aware of the changes that need to be in place to be able to hold them accountable. So that will, that process happens after tonight if this bid is approved as, from the school committee that you will award the bid to NRT, then the next step is now we're going to have to develop the contract. And that contract then has to come before you all, or people. Am I wrong? Did I get that right, Mr. Goslin?
I believe you're correct.
Member Willett?
So I think that answered a lot of my, my questions because this is going to be a multifaceted process. The impression I got from the bid discussion was some of the bidders did not furnish information, but NRT beyond a mathematical computation error that was corrected. My concern with NRT, and it might still be in place, is that the institutional culture wasn't the greatest to say diplomatically. And when they appeared here, they were very disjointed in their answers or they were incorrect in their answers or even defiant in their answers. In terms of the thing I was talking in meetings past of having some type of employee handbook or onboarding, the impression I got by reading this is that the other bid vendors did not provide a driver handbook. Did NIT update its policy of doing a handbook or employee handbook?
If I could answer that, yes, there was an employee handbook as, as part of the bid specifications of their bid submission.
Okay. And then if we decide to do upgrades in terms of, of safety, again, I represent one voice, one vote. I know that there's a state law that would allow cameras to be attached to the extended stop sign, electronic stop sign, and that could be recorded and that's something that would probably be up by discussion of the school committee and the, the city council because it's epidemic of people going through the extended electronic stop sign on school buses. We do those type of contracts and also converting from the Cory system to strictly FBI database. Those things are going to still be included as part of the, the contract discussions. Like again, making sure the cameras are in place. If they're not working, they're penalized. Upgrading from the false security of the Cory check to FBI database. Making sure that the individual special education buses or vans can be, can be tracked. And I don't think we have a system like that. Making sure that we have relative compliance on the, on the app and reporting to the, the parents. Those are the things that I still have concerns about. Again, it was the institutional culture, it was the, the safety issues and making sure that we're doing a full dashboard, so to speak, to the parents in terms of accountability. And I think we, we did it internally with the texts and the emails, but sometimes some of the parents are saying they're not receiving the texts and the emails and that's something we might have to explore further. But if they're doing an employee handbook and we can explore the public safety issues and there's an improvement in the institutional culture and we're going to improve the app and work with the, I would say, the glaring blind spots of the system of tracking. And I think there was other districts that had issues with the special ed vans and buses in terms of tracking those buses and vans. Those will probably be an ongoing conversation, but I don't want that put by the wayside. But I mean, it's, it's going to be a cost savings to us compared to the other bidder. Obviously I still had reservations about NRT. I commend the consultant, I commend the subcommittee. They are constantly trying to achieve savings, but there'll be an accountability measures that were not in the prior contract. Thank you.
Member Shabilia?
One clarifying comment. For member Maxwell, I understand your apprehension. I echoed it during every conversation this subcommittee had, but the unfortunate reality is while it's super fun to say we should find a solution, there are not 36 buses hiding behind a bush somewhere in an alley. There are no other bus companies out there that can do this. It's not like they are waiting for us somewhere. It's, it's not that we want NRT or that, it's, the ultimate reality is they are the only company we can afford because we don't have the extra four and a half-ish million dollars to do for a student. And I think suggesting that we find one is a, a dangerous concept because that would imply that they are out there and the fact is they aren't. there. And the fact is, they aren't. It's, it's not a gray area. It's not a question. There are not 36 extra buses somewhere waiting for Methuen to come knocking. And if someone wants to start a bus company and can pay me enough, I will drive the damn bus. But here we are with NRT trying to make the best of the situation we have.
All right. I think we're ready for our vote. Roll call.
Member DeZoglio?
Yes.
Member Donovan?
Yes.
Member Keegan?
Yes.
Member Maxwell?
No.
Member Chabilla?
Yes.
Member Willett?
Yes.
Mayor Borghardt?
Yes.
Passes six yes, one no.
Next on the agenda, Member Donovan, we have the discussion regarding the behavioral student support positions.
Good night, Rich.
You don't want to stay, Rich?
Thank you, Rich.
We're only going to be here for another two more hours, sir. Feel free to hang out if you'd like.
You're going to miss all the good parts.
I'm recovering from COVID, so that's why, that's why I've been-
All the best.
Thank you, Rich.
I'll be in touch.
Mayor, if I could just provide just a reminder for myself as well. Last year, we approved just a handful of new positions. Among them were these people who would work addressing some behavior, mental health concerns in our grammar schools. I thought it would be important to look at the efficacy of our decision. And that's why I asked Dr. Kwong to provide us with some data. So as we move forward, was it worth it? Are we getting our money's worth? Because it's a good chunk of change. I believe all the positions we approved last year, but one, and that may be a PA, have been filled. So, and I appreciate the work going into this, and I know you're going to run us through this, correct?
Yes.
Okey dokey.
Going to run you through this. So, so yes, per Member Donovan and request from others, we provided an update here. And I say we, the principals provided this information with their staff. I know Mr. Crocker is here as well, who provided some support and information with data gathering. So if there are questions there, I'm sure he'd be happy to come and answer those questions. But we have the three different, two positions that, that are mentioned here amongst the four schools and then a program pilot at the CGS, the Bright Program. So that one's a little bit different, but similar in the support, student support arena to make sure that our kids are getting what they need. So the Timony Grammar School and the Tenney Grammar School both requested the RIS coordinator. So this is the, a person looking to support students, looking to provide collaborative problem solving with students. The number of both of these schools last year, just to refresh everybody's memory, had an unequal amount of students being sent to the upper school offices, a lot because of their size compared to the CGS and the Marsh upper schools. And the APs are one person. And so was, you know, students need to be seen, they need to be spoken to. How is one person, when they're dealing with maybe one situation, you know, a conflict between two students that could take multiple hours, and yet there are seven other students who really need to be removed or seen? It is definitely a challenge. That's where this was born from, I guess. And so Mr. Reeve provided, you can see there's some really detailed information, really working with, I think the RIS coordinator there hit the ground running with upper school right away and going into working with students. There's some of the numbers that even I was, you know, surprised to see just the sheer number of students that this person is actually meeting with and the correlation that undoubtedly speaking with Mr. Keen and Mr. Reeve is happening between the number of suspensions and the number of students who are working with the RIS coordinator. So that relationship building is key. The collaborative problem solving and the training that that person is getting, they both are, I think, have been just paramount to the work that's being done in that school. I did go through, again, there's a lot of information here, but I did go through this with Mr. Reeve. So if there are specific questions, it might be better to just allow you the opportunity to ask those by school, I would say, than me going through it. But I did go through it with him just because he had a lot here that was, that was a little different. So we can do that. The Tenney RIS program started a little differently. I think one of the things that, the challenge that the Tenney was met with and has been met with in other previous years is that we have students that come into kindergarten and first grade who we don't have a lot of information about and who may not be school-ready. And what I mean by that is, you know, the teachers are trying to figure out the different behaviors. Their responses may not be typical. And this year, we, we had a good handful of students who needed some serious support and our teachers needed some additional support. So the RIS coordinator spent a little more time in the lower school in the beginning of the year to support those teachers and those students who needed that level of support and has since moved after the winter break to working with the upper school associate principal. So the data for the Tenney just looks different. Not to say that the person and the position hasn't been really effective. And the person who was in that position has an incredible background on student support services, crisis management, therapeutic management. She has a really vast and interesting background to be able to toggle between sort of supporting these five-year-olds coming into school and not, you know, they're escalating dysregulated behaviors and working with them and the teachers, but now also kind of going into the realm of working with our 13- and 14-year-olds and working through some collaborative problem solving and keeping them out of trouble. So, so it does look very different. And that's why I think the context to that is very important. And then at the CGS and the Marsh, you can see there, the CGS, the first one that she's reporting on is the crisis intervention this. And then there's some data there about the Bright Program, again, that, that John has been intimately involved with. And I did go through this with Ms. Proetti as well just because there was some additional data. I wanted to make sure that if there were questions, I could report out. The Marshes is pretty self-explanatory. Some information on total numbers there on a weekly basis of what that person is responding to and meetings and et cetera. And again, I think, you know, I don't, I don't think this comes as a shock, but these positions, when I asked the principals to do this, there was a resounding yes, because they have made some incredible differences in the school and the culture of the school and the teachers feeling like there is a place and a time and support. And that is resounding. And you don't get that very often, that what all four principals were looking for to support the students in their schools has been met with the people who can actually fit the need. So that was pretty remarkable that we were able to accomplish that. And all four principals and teams speak so highly of these four individuals who are doing this work to support the students and the staff in the schools. So I say that as my sort of introduction, so you know the differences. If there are specific questions, I'm happy to take it. And if I can't answer it, I'm happy to bring that back to the principals to bring back at a future date.
Member Donovan, any questions? Member DeZoglio?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have one question because I actually got this from teachers. And again, you could just clarify. They say why at the Timony, they eliminated to third and fourth, but not access to K through two? Is there a reason why it's only for 5 through eight, we're limited third and fourth, but K and two doesn't have access at all?
Mostly because of the sheer numbers. Sheer numbers. So the, the idea originated that it would be a support for upper school mostly when we presented it last year because of the sheer numbers that both of those upper school offices were seeing on a daily basis and that the upper school teachers were experiencing. Yeah, sheer numbers, the volume that was happening. There's really no-
Quick question. So if, just say lower school starting increasing numbers, would you guys have the manpower?
Yeah, I, I do know, I mean, Mr. Reeve definitely explained to me that its, its focus is five-eight. Most of this data is five-eight. There's some, there's some interaction with some three, four students who need some of that support that the RIS coordinator does interact with. Again, it's just the, you know, how many hours are in a day and what, we're talking about one person as well, right? So it's the, it's the sheer volume of what this person is actually doing on a daily basis, on who they can see. But that, it truly doesn't go really beyond that. Chris did say there's, there's some students that he's seeing, you know, some students that are becoming students that are going to the office too frequently as third and fourth graders that the RIS coordinator has taken on to try to build that relationship with and build those skills. That's about, I mean, we do-
No, I would, I would agree for sure. And it's certainly not the case that those students aren't able to access RIS. It's, it's simply the case that this is how the data has fallen out in terms of students who have required that support. That's really it.
Okay, perfect.
Good question.
Member Willett?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Are any of these positions grant eligible? Because I know this, is this the, this current fiscal year, this is the first time we've implemented this? Okay. I mean, have we explored that or even presented it to the legislative delegation? Because the report that you guys presented was phenomenal. And it justifies my vote on the budget. And that was, I drew a line in the sand. I said, we're going to make some painful cuts because of the governor's budget. But the crisis intervention was, was necessary. And I'm a person, I love to review the data. And like Member Donovan had indicated, and I know you gave us some testimonials and some horror stories that justified the crisis intervention, but then we had to quantify-
Right.
-the results of the implementation of the crisis intervention positions. Obviously, that's going to be first on my list is the preservation of these positions. And I think it's taking, prior to that was taking away from teacher time, counselor time, administrative time. And we have, and also too, I think the out-of-school suspensions because of the nature of some of the homes wasn't conducive to the child. And obviously, some of the crisis intervention with the students, the fact that some of the students were saying that that's the only person that's trustworthy as an adult is kind of heartbreaking. And the holistic approach that your team is taking of working with the families and working with the home front. So I appreciate that. But maybe something as a school district is something they, they offer amendments all the time in the budget cycle. And I know we're going to be competing with different elements, but something this, that maybe explore, but-
It's a, it's a perfect use for Title IV funds. However, we don't know if we're going to get those. And those already, those already are used by salaries. But this is the kind of position that a Title IV grant would, would be able to support.
And I know it's very difficult with, you can't like co-mingle funds. You have different silos.
And that we've already paid for it with the operating budget now would eliminate some of the federal opportunities that we would have.
Okay.
So there's some rules, but not that we wouldn't continue to keep looking anyway, which we are for a lot of different positions at this point.
Yeah. But just for the record, I mean, obviously, I'm going to try to help with the custodians as best I can, but the budget is very sombering from the governor. But this is something, I was going to say for the record, I cannot support a budget that would cut these positions. I just, that's a line in the sand I'm going to have again. I did it for the prior, I'll make the difficult cuts, but I can, I cannot cut these positions. I thank you for the presentation. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
So we'll hear from Member Chabilla and then we'll have a follow-up from Member Donovan.
So I was pleasantly surprised because, as you know, John, I was skeptical, which I have a habit of being just generally across the board. I'm thrilled to see that it's working. I'm thrilled to see that it's having a positive impact in, in the classroom. I guess my, my first question is what separates this RIS coordinator or behavioral intervention, so whatever their, their title is-
Yeah.
-from our regular guidance folks? Like, what is the difference in person training, all that stuff?
I, I would say probably the biggest difference that I would point to, because there's often a fair amount of overlap between the background, as we can see from the position at the Tenney. The biggest difference in my mind is really that we're talking about caseload carrying folks that have a lot of students on their caseload compared to a much more specialized role that is focused on specific incidents, specific pieces of the service array. So it's, that's, that I would point to is probably the largest difference. It's just the, you know, what we're pointing these staff members at in terms of their responsibilities. And, you know, for one of those big responsibilities is special education service delivery that has to be offered, that has to be scheduled. So these scheduled services do lock people in at times to responsibilities that they can't walk away from, or it's difficult to walk away from those things. So I think the addition of these positions has created a situation where they're still definitely responding to crisis, but they're not having to walk away from services wholesale. And that's, that's a pretty huge piece because if we don't get to invest in the preventative services, then we are simply in this hamster wheel of responding to crisis all day long.
I would add to that because in my conversations with all the principals regarding this, that message was echoed. Like, I don't know what I would do without this person, right? On a walkie, at lunch, knowing these kids, knowing their names. There's a, there's a different level of interactability that all four of these people, I believe, have with the students. But also, one thing that Mr. Crocker didn't say is the RIS coordinators especially, there's a level of discipline that is involved with their position that a guidance counselor would not be involved in, right? So that, these coordinators are also talking to students about their behaviors, right? Thinking through those skills of the behaviors. Not that a guidance counselor wouldn't do that, but they're also acting as that timeout space, right? The, the preventative time that, that students need to be somewhere before their, we call it pre-suspension time, right? Like, there's a, there's a discipline piece to that, that I would never ask a counselor to sit with a student for two hours as an in-school suspension opportunity or a space to cool off, right? Is a better way to kind of, and I hope that's a better way to say it to you, that, just that level of day-to-day, their day-to-day schedule is not going to look like a guidance counselors who do have that sort of scheduled student service delivery that they may have. So just all around, right? They're not getting pulled for crisis. And again, I think all four of the principals were like, I don't know what I would have done without this person for, for a variety of reasons. It's just amazing how all four of them were happy to put this together, to say, this is something we've needed. We need it. We have the numbers to prove it. This is why we need these programs for our kids. So I hope I can, I told all of them, I hope I could convey their, their passion and their appreciation and their wanting this to continue because it has made such an impact on sort of all pieces that hopefully is conveyed here to all of you.
That's awesome. Building off of that, and I know that I've, I think it's been discussed in our tenure and I've listened to it as a conversation from previous members of different school committees, is the in-school suspension. Are we doing it at every school now? Or is this something just our RIS coordinators are doing?
So our RIS coordinators are doing it by structure.
What does that mean?
That means that that was part of the job description, is that it was going to be some in-school suspension opportunities. I would say our crisis interventionists are doing some of that. We did not include that as part of their job description, but I think there is, I can tell you that there is some of that happening for opportunities where kids need that. Not as widespread as what's happening with the RIS. So there is that piece that is a little different between the schools. The CGS and the Marsh don't have a structured- The CGS and the Marsh don't have a structured, I can send this student here for a half a day or a day for in-school suspension, to do the work, to be supervised, to not be at home, not knowing what that child is doing. We would much rather have them in school. We do not have that structure at the Marsh and the CGS at this time.
And that's, that's the part that makes me a little uneasy. I just, I don't understand how, I mean, this, the program sounds fantastic and I'm thrilled and like Member Willett said, I hope that we can expand it. But how do we do, how do we implement the in-school suspension and the RIS program more holistically? I guess that's, that's the task, John, and you gotta do it with no money, so.
To be continued.
All right. I'm, I'm on it. No, I, I mean, I think it's a point well taken that I think even from the beginning of this year, there's an appreciation for how these positions have come to support buildings and support kids. So that continued line of thinking where we have to be ready for the next steps in this innovative process are necessary. So my, you know, I, I think it's, it's going to be an important reflection point here and then for the next several months around like where, what is next around these positions. So that's a piece that I think has to be a part of the ongoing conversation.
Member Donovan?
Yeah, um, thank you to you and your team for doing this. I think it's an important exercise for us to say, we made a decision, was it a good one? And I think for the most part, we're seeing that. What we didn't discuss is obviously there's an impact on the students who are directly involved with these staff members. Think about the students in the classrooms who aren't really that direct contact, but have, don't have the disruptions and the distractions that they may have had to experience because of students having a really bad time of it. So I appreciate that. There was also a comment in the report that now common planning time with administrators is uninterrupted. No one's being called out so they can focus on what we really need. Good, you know, discussions about teaching and learning. So I appreciate that very much. And I'd like to give a shout out, and I would hope that down the road, we revisit this as we, as, just to help inform us a little more, like how we could build on this, what appears to be a success. I think Mr. Reeve did a really great job. They all did, but his information showed me how it works really dramatically in one school. And the fact that from this admin, and I believe it's Mr. Reeve, is now doing a basketball morning thing with these students, which tells me the administrators have bought into this.
Hundred percent.
So I think this was terrific. You know, I know we have some real challenges ahead, but this is the type of position that impacts every student, not the ones who need that extra attention. Right?
It's, it's a fair point and.
It really is.
And indirect, of course.
Right. I wanna echo, when this first came about, I, I think I was pretty clear. I have strong feelings about in-school suspensions. If it's offered in one school, and, because it's a wonderful thing to do, if we can do it. I feel very strongly, every child in this community should, if he has, if he does something that warrants it, should have the opportunity to be in a safe place where he can continue his work and be supported, if it's appropriate. So I'm gonna say it again, I really hope we can expand the in-school suspension piece so all let's do, all students have access to that at the Grammas.
To be continued, yes.
That's very important to me, but thank you. Thanks for doing this.
Yep, my pleasure.
Any other questions or discussion? Thank you, Mr. Crocker.
Thank you.
Just a quick time check. We are now almost three hours in. It's almost nine o'clock PM. We have 11 more items on the agenda plus an executive session. Just encourage us to be a tad more cognizant of time. Enter, entertain a motion, order a pizza at any point.
So moved.
Excuse me, Mayor, did you wanna do a vote now to extend past nine o'clock?
Probably a good idea.
So, so moved.
Second.
All right. Motion from Member Shabilia, second from the vice chair to extend past nine o'clock. Roll call.
Member DeZoglio?
Yes.
Member Donovan?
Yes.
Member Keegan?
Yes.
Member Maxwell?
Yes.
Member Shabilia?
Yes.
Member Willett?
Yes.
Mayor Borghardt?
Yes. Going past nine. At this point, we're gonna move on to the health reporting proposals, part of the agenda. Member Shabilia, Member Willett, pass it off to you, perhaps if you wanna start.
Uh, real quick, the proposal that I put forward, which, I don't know which one came first in the packet, but the one with the, the bold headings was a repurpose of what Member DeZoglio had put forward a few meetings back. The intention, I thought, was positive. It was to capture what is happening in real time so we don't have surprises going forward. The problem with the document as presented was it was requiring people like the state to do things at our demand, and well, that doesn't work. So I offered to help rework that, and this is the product I came up with. Initially called it a policy. I know that Dr. Quong had done it and I had called MASC as well, and it's not a policy. It's gonna be a, it's gonna be a procedure?
Admini- a request of the school committee to administration to provide to you on a monthly or regular basis.
Right. So what I did is I stopped, I took a step back and I said, okay, we already have a state mandate, state law that requires our kitchens to be inspected annually. Those reports, by what I am suggesting, would be provided to us following any, any report that comes out of the school would be provided to us in the following meeting packet. There's also a request in here that annually, we make a formal request through the mayor for Department of Health to do a inspection of our schools. This was said to be done at the end, I think is what I originally proposed, but the timing of that inspection could go either way. It could be at the beginning of the year so we have time to fix it. It could be at the end of the year so we have the summer to fix it. I don't think the timing is the important part. I think it's the, the ask and the product that stems from that because I think it accomplishes what everybody here is trying to accomplish and it gets us a formal submission of in, information, not vague book and other ambiguous statements that may come, or sometimes not so ambiguous that just don't come through formal channels. So it's hard to act upon. So that was the intent here. And I mean, I, I assume that Member Willett's had a very similar intent and I, but I won't, I won't speak for you on that one.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and Member Shabilia. I've always wanted to work in a collaborative fashion with the school committee as a whole and the subcommittee on an individual basis. I would be remiss if I didn't offer some suggestions, and I think some of the suggestions are already in, in place. Some of the suggestions resonated from reports from the state. Some are items that we could maybe have the administration look at point by point and do a follow-up report to us to see if we're doing it or not. Again, it's something that my intention is just to be on record, to have it reviewed by the school committee. The framework that Member Shabilia had, I, I'm in concert with that. I think it's a good starting point. If it's something that we would just wanna have it referred to the subcommittee, but the subcommittee is involved in, in policy. So if we're talking about just a recommendation or a sense of the committee to the administration, if the administration wanted to respond to it point, point by point, I just wanted to make sure we're, we're on record of either having a dashboard set up or having some type of reporting mechanism for us, making sure certain things are not lingering or festering or not attended to from the past. So I think as a committee, we have to make sure that we're vigilant in receiving reports and following up on inspections and ensuring that the energy of the, the schools is at the highest efficiency, that we don't have rodents and pests in our schools, that the ventilation systems are tended to on a regular basis, the temperature gauges and a whole list of items, water infiltration. So that was just my sense of things I wanted to present to the committee and maybe the, the superintendent can follow up on a report on it. But that was just my, it's late in the hour, so that's what I just wanted to present to the committee. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions, discussion? If not, we'll move on. The expenditure report. Any questions from the committee regarding the expenditure report?
I do just wanna point out that I did add a column to this for Ms. Donovan. It does include FY '24 year-to-date. And any of you who were here last year at that time, I don't know if you remember, Munis, I put a little note there. It does kick in, it comes up to date next month, so it'll be more accurate. So last year with the start of Munis, we're having trouble posting our payroll. Right around March 1, we were able to post it more consistently. So next month, you'll see that those FY '24 numbers will be more similar to the FY '25 numbers. Just wanted to point that out. I did add that cause she did ask me.
I did, I did. Thank you, thank you.
I, I hope that's suffice.
Yes.
Any other questions about that report?
Thank you.
I don't have any questions, but along those lines. So Teddy from the Tribune is in the audience. Hi. Real quick, you just mentioned Munis. I completely forgot to respond to your text. We're in the process of getting the fiscal year '25 information on the website. We have a new dashboard. It's methuen.gov/Transparency. Fiscal year '24 is on there, '25 is in the works, Teddy. I, I was gonna forget to respond, so here I am right now, responding to that message. Yeah. Any, any other questions about the expenditure report? All right, we'll move on. Regarding the revolving funds report, any questions regarding revolving funds? Grants? Questions in the committee regarding the grants report? Yes, sir.
Four million, five hundred and eighty-three thousand, three hundred and fifty-five dollars is the total federal aid for FY '25 that is on here. Just food for thought, given the uncertainty. That's the, that's the number that is our starting point, which is a little scary.
Any other questions, comments? Student activity accounts? Any questions, comments regarding the student activity accounts report? We have lastly, under reports, food services report? Any questions or comments from the committee? Contract approval is next on the agenda. We have none. Notifications of appointments and other personnel matters, we have none. Business from the committee, other business from the committee? Member Shabilia, I'd like you to give an update regarding the transportation subcommittee.
Uh, I feel like we covered this already during our NRT contract discussion. That's the update on that one.
Member Shabilia, also, we have an update regarding the policy review subcommittee.
I am currently trying to coordinate with MASC the first meeting for the policy subcommittee to go over the first pass at some policies that they have reviewed and will be providing feedback on. Unfortunately, they are not the easiest. When you have so many people trying to coordinate schedules, it kinda stinks. So we're, it's, it's a moving target, but we're gonna get it on and hopefully by our next meeting, we will have some product of that.
Next, we have an update regarding the audit. The audit is underway. We had an initial meeting, audit subcommittee with, well, actually, I had, I had that meeting with the folks from C-Biz, but then the audit subcommittee membership went through, got together and had the opportunity to start putting together a list of individuals to be interviewed as part of the audit. So that's gonna be a pretty widespread representative, objective list. So that is in the works and we'll continue to provide updates as that continues along, but we're really just getting started. Nothing new to update there. Any other business from the committee in general? Member DeZoglio?
Real quick, two things. We didn't go over a realign, a re, I'm gonna go, what's the word I'm looking for? Reapplying to our subcommittees, every year we're supposed to re-establish the subcommittees. So I would recommend we put that on the agenda item. Also, as I was talking with Member Donovan, we need to propose our first training for the school committee. So there's a few on the list that we've been talking, teamwork, if you wanna suggest any of that. I see all the smiles right now. No? Okay, well, it'll be fun. So we have to put that on the agenda for the next meeting so we can have that done.
Sure.
Thank you.
Can I just make a comment though on the, can I make a comment on what he said? As far as the subcommittees, it's my, we asked that question, cause I think Member Shabilia asked me and Martha, and we double-checked that if we have subcommittees that are currently existing and ongoing, we don't have to re-establish them. That's how it was explained to us, right? From MASC? So we, we currently have a transportation subcommittee, a policy subcommittee, and the facility building subcommittee. There haven't been any changes in membership and it's ongoing, so they, they expressed to us that there was no reason to put it on agenda to re-establish. So unless they misinformed us?
Well, that's just, oh, sorry. Well, that's just been a common practice since I've been on school committee. That's why I'm just, every year we did that. Yeah.
Did I miss? I'm sorry, may I just speak? I believe if the committee changes and people either don't run again or are not elected or your time is up, then at that point, you would have to re-establish new members on the subcommittee. That's how it was explained to us.
With the organization meeting, right?
With the organization. Otherwise, they stay the same until this body changes.
Any other business from the committee? If not, we will, actually, before we do that, before I just adjourn us, I have an executive session. So with no further business to discuss, we need a motion in a second to adjourn this business session of the Methuen School Committee for February 10th, 2025, and enter into executive session.
So moved.
Second.
Motion from Member DeZoglio, second from the vice chair pursuant to Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 38, Section 21A3, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining or litigation if an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining or litigating position of the public body and the chair. So declares, I'll make that declaration now. This is regarding units A and C. We will not reconvene into the open session at the conclusion of the executive session. So we'll take a roll call, vote on entering executive session.
Member DeZoglio?
Yes.
Member Donovan? Member Keegan?
Yes.
Member Maxwell?
Yes.
Member Shabilia?
Yes.
Member Willett?
Yes.
Member Borghardt?
Yes.
Sorry, yes. So we've taken that vote to enter executive session. The open session is adjourned at 9:05 PM and we will enter into executive session.
Good night, Methuen.